Public hearing and possible board action on a negative declaration. A Title 17 zoning amendment in denial of Project 2010-031. This is a planning issue. For the format this afternoon, I will initially go to staff. County staff, staff will make their presentation. I'll bring it back to the board for board comments. Then we'll go to the public. For public comments, public comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Apparently, there are a lot of people that will like to speak. And at the conclusion of public comments, then I will bring it back for further board discussion. Well, excuse me, after board public comments, I'll bring it back to staff to see if staff has any additional comments. Then I'll bring it back to the board. There'll be board discussion, and then the chair will entertain a motion. On the public comments, it's three minutes per person. We don't allow people to transfer their time to somebody else. You need to stand up individually and either take your three minutes. You're only allowed to speak once. So with that, we'll go to staff and entertain the staff report on this item.
Good afternoon, Darcy Galar, Planning Department. At the February 17th Planning Commission meeting, this item was heard. The Planning Commission took public testimony, deliberated on the item, and the outcome are two recommendations in front of you. The first recommendation from the Planning Commission on a three-to-two vote was to recommend to adopt the negative declaration that was prepared. The second recommendation to the board from the Planning Commission on a three-to-two vote was to deny the amendment request. That concludes Planning Staff's presentation for this item, and I'll turn it over to County Council.
Janice Elliott, County Council's office. I just wanted to make a few points since the majority of the comments you received were legal issues, and there were a couple of factual errors in the comments that you received. First of all, the proposed amendments to Title 17 do not include any amendments to the definition of agritourism. That issue is currently being litigated by the county. It would be inappropriate at this time to change the definition of agritourism. The county's position, based on the Board of Supervisors' prior decision, is that golf is not agritourism. The court will ultimately determine whether or not golf is considered agritourism. I do note that if the court does determine that golf is agritourism, that the existing golf course that generated most of the comments before you today will be considered illegal use with no further conditions and no requirements to mitigate any of the golf course's impacts. But that issue's not before you today. Another issue that was raised in the comments that's not before you today are Williamson Act contracts because the county zones property subject to Williamson Act contracts into the AP zoning district, and the proposed amendments do not involve the AP zoning district. Many of the comments that you received, primarily from attorneys or people who cited legal briefs to you, are based on the Trinitas Golf Course and the environmental impacts from that golf course, were submitted as evidence to you that all golf courses have environmental impacts. I think it's important to note that the Trinitas Golf Course was constructed without any environmental review, and therefore, the impacts from that golf course are not evidence that all golf courses will have environmental impacts because that golf course did not come before you, before it was constructed, so that you could review its potential impacts and mitigate any of those impacts. The proposed amendments to Title 17 require an applicant to apply for a conditional use permit for a golf course as defined in the proposed amendment, and that application will be subjected to complete environmental review under CEQA. The environmental review will be site-specific and will address any potential impacts that are identified based on the project description and the location of the proposed golf course. There were several comments stating that all golf courses are growth-inducing, and therefore, a negative declaration is not sufficient for the proposed amendments since it does not address the growth-inducing impacts of a golf course. The support for these comments was referenced to case law, to site-specific golf course projects that have already been reviewed under CEQA, and also to the Trinitas Golf Course, which was not reviewed under CEQA. I wanted you to know there's no case law that states that all golf courses lead to growth-inducing impacts. There's also evidence that some golf courses can't be constructed without golf-inducing impacts, or, excuse me, growth-inducing impacts. I'll discuss that in a minute. The main case on this issue, which was cited to several times, is Stanislas Audubon Society versus County of Stanislas. That was a project that proposed a 27-hole golf course, putting greens, driving range, four tennis courts, a swimming pool and cabana, maintenance building, and clubhouse with locker rooms, showers, meeting facilities, offices, pro shop, lounge, and a restaurant. The project site was located on approximately 600 acres of the developer's 2,500 acres. The property was located at the southwestern intersection of State Highway 108-120 and the main private road serving the property, thus providing easy access and potential high visibility to the project. The county's own initial study originally concluded this project may indeed have a significant growth-inducing impact and that no mitigation measures were available to avoid this impact. The record also reflected that the developer refused a condition on the project that would prohibit future residential subdivision of the property. The court found that the developer's refusal to accept this condition was very significant in his decision and concluded, based on those facts, that the golf course was potentially growth-inducing, and therefore, an EIR was necessary to address those impacts. All the other cases referred to in the public comment also included site-specific golf course projects where an impact could be identified. There are several examples of existing golf courses in California that were not growth-inducing. There's the Chardonnay Golf Course located in NEPA County. There's Venti Vineyards in Livermore, which has no residential development in the area. It does have concerts, as you're aware. And there's the Stevenson Ranch Golf Club located in Stevenson. All three of those have no residential development located around the golf courses. Many of the site-specific golf courses that are referred to in the comments, including Tuscany and Jackson Hills, included other improvements, including residential and water and sewer infrastructure to serve the projects. Here, the proposed project is an amendment to the zoning code to add golf courses as a conditional use, which will be subject to site-specific environmental review. Until an application for a conditional use permit for a site-specific golf course is submitted, it's staff's position is speculation to find that a golf course will have a growth-inducing impact. Also, there are many comments that this amendment is being proposed solely for the Trinitas Golf Course. That golf course is currently zoned AP. The parties in the litigation are currently conducting discovery and will soon be doing expert witness discovery. There is a motion pending in the parallel bankruptcy proceedings by the bank for relief from the automatic stay that the bankruptcy provides. There are references in one of the comments to the declaration of the bank attorney as evidence that the county and the Neenies have settled that litigation or that there is a plan to entitle the golf course. These statements are inaccurate. In fact, some of the statements in the bank attorney's declaration are inaccurate, and many of those statements in that declaration are no longer applicable based on issues that have come to light in litigation since that declaration was filed. It is unclear at this time what is going to happen to that property, including who may ultimately possess that property. It is also unclear as to whether that property can continue to operate as a golf course based on some of the facts that have been raised during the discovery of that litigation and among discussions between all of the attorneys involved, including attorneys representing the unsecured creditors. I can tell you, as you already know, there is no settlement of the Neenies versus County case. There's no written settlement. There's no proposed settlement. There is no settlement with that case. I don't know what the court's going to do next week on the bank's motion, and there may be other motions filed soon based on some outstanding discoveries that the parties intend to take that may impact ownership and operation of the property. The county is always required to notice the bankruptcy court of any action it takes that may impact the value of a bankruptcy estate, and I have continued to do that throughout the bankruptcy proceedings. The proposed amendments to Title 17 are based on the fact that the board discussed this issue at the end of the agritourism appeals in 2009, and also related to an agricultural coalition letter that was submitted after that decision, and on a memo that I provided to you during the agritourism appeal as to how other counties consider golf courses. The Ag Coalition at the Planning Commission suggested that the minimum parcel size for golf courses in the A1 zone be increased to 100 acres, which staff concurs is a good change, and that would require a change in the proposed footnote attached to the use from 20 acres to 100 acres.
Why put our fifteen points to make up all of our hours?
To 100 acres, not contiguous parcels. That is up to the board to determine, but staff has no issue with the suggested change. The definition of golf course is also subject to footnote nine, which places limitations on the special events that could occur on-site. Other comments noted that the proposed amendments are premature at this time due to the general plan update, and also question staff time. The general plan update is continuing, and staff time on these proposed amendments does not impact the general plan update because of other staff that is working on the general plan update. Nothing being proposed today impacts the status of the general plan update. A few other comments raise issues related to CCWD and some proposed pipeline. None of these amendments have anything to do with CCWD or proposed pipeline. I don't have any other comments. If there's any questions, please let me know.
Does that complete your comments?
Yes.
That does. That staff's comment. Okay. Any board members have any questions to staff at this time? Seeing none, I will now open it for public discussion. Before I do, just let me say that we have been inundated with correspondence, the board has, on this issue. The board is very familiar with that correspondence. That correspondence is of record by the fact that it has been submitted. I don't quite know what new information there is to present at this time, but if you feel the obligation to speak, you may reference, incorporate by reference, anything that you've written, which is in fact incorporated. The board is very informed on this issue. It's been before the board now for several years, so perhaps you could be just direct and to the point. What is most critical would be any new information. I don't know how there could be any new information unless it came out of the court. So I will open it for public comments. You don't feel, if you feel like you don't need the three minutes, well, you certainly are not required to speak for three minutes. Okay. Public comments, please. Well, nobody will close public comments.[759.13][759.13](Laughter). Okay. Marina's going to be our timekeeper. Please, when you address the board, address the board from the podium. This is part of our regular agenda. This is of record, which means it is being taped recorded and it is being televised. So your comments will be here for posterity. Thank you.
My name is Joan Bull, and I'm sorry I didn't send the literature, but I was out of the country. First of all, I want to tell you, I've attended the Planning Commission's and your Board of Supervisors' for years, so I know what you've gone through. I applaud your earlier decisions faithfully. I attended your meetings. I made my comments along with others, and you took the time and the courtesy to go over everybody's comments. I feel that to change zoning or to amend the general plan in order for the golf course built without permits or licenses and still doing business without consideration to neighbors and to the county is wrong, as well as will set off other problems. The other problems that I see as a businessperson is other requests that have been gone on before Trinitas might bring lawsuits to Calaveras also. If we change it for one, then they're going to want the same thing also. Requests probably made in the future will still bring up the same argument. They want to come in if we change the laws now. I've had a business in Calaveras County for 10 years. Each year, I am obligated by law to buy a license in which to sell or whatever with my product. Also, every five years, I have to put a public notice in regarding what the company is, the name, and what it does. So I feel that if every business did this, our county would be a lot better, and I'm not saying anybody else doesn't. But so I feel that there should not be an exception to Trinitas. I feel that every business pays a license in Calaveras County should be excluded now from having to purchase a license and publish the information. In fact, maybe all businesses would get together and be grandfathered into a plan to recoup our previous payments now and in the future. Some of the aforementioned, I know it sounds ridiculous to some people, but some people might say, "Well, that's not really as stupid as it sounds." So I am truly sorry for your commission, as well as the Board of Supervisors, that you've gone through so much of what's gone on with one group wanting and demanding the rules be changed just for them. I trust in your desire to follow the rules for justice for all, not just one group. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name, excuse me, my name is Frances Mary Sams. I live in Wallace. I will do that. My name is Frances Mary Sams. I live in Wallace. I thank each one of you for your service to our community, especially Gary Tofanella, who was our district supervisor. Your work, sir, is appreciated. I jotted down just a few notes because I get so nervous up here. This county has been divided for the last couple of years. Now, there is a common denominator that can bring a county together to make it run smoothly, and the name of that is the law. And this would be the zoning law. As far as this hearing is concerned, it is the zoning law. Now, the zoning laws, there are arguments for and against a specific zoning law. There are restrictions with the zoning laws. There are obligations that go with the zoning laws, but there is also security that goes with the zoning laws. That would be, you can put up a beautiful home in Calaveras County, and with the zoning laws, you don't have to worry that a year or two down the road, somebody's going to put a gas station up next door to you. As good citizens, we are required to obey the laws. If we want to build a project, a developer, a single person, an organization, then we must, it is incumbent upon us to obey the laws that are in place at that time. We obey the law. We don't turn the law around to make the law obey us. Now, you have been elected to be keepers of the law, not to be benefactors of those who would disregard our laws. To change, to add an amendment to the zoning laws, I believe, this is my belief, that it will weaken the office that you've been entrusted with, not for just yourselves, but for all those who follow you. We are at a crossroads in this county. You have the option. You can see to it that the law benefits the whole community equally, or you can change the face of this county forever, and I sincerely hope that wiser minds will prevail.
Thank you. Other public comments.
I'm Will Moore from Valley Springs. Kind of sorry to hear about all the information you have because I brought a bunch more.[1094.04][1094.04](Laughter). Anyhow, my comments about it on the first page, I'll hand that to you. You don't have to look at all of it. And since I left my glasses out in the car, I won't bother to read too much of it to you, so I won't take a whole lot of your time. The gist of it is that what we're considering here is-
You have three minutes for your comments.
-special interest government doing special interest laws for special interest individuals. The whole point is that agricultural land is disappearing in a hungry world. This action you're considering taking, taking ag land out of ag production, isn't just for one generation. This goes on, once it's out, it's out for good. Our generations of our descendants will be paying for this loss of ag land in this generation for many generations to come. In this, in your 350-page attachment to the agenda, 70-some people wrote letters to the Planning Commission. Out of the 72, 70 opposed it. Two were in favor. One was neutral. One of the ones that did approve of it was a San Francisco golfer who wants to come out here, have a place to play.[1204.13][1204.13](Laughter). I mean, how important is it for this 60-year-old adolescent to come out here and have a place to play in the country, really? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Melody Barrett, and I'm a disabled nurse, and I live on Miles Road, about 2,000 or 3,000 feet away from the edge of the golf course. Our water is tan, and I don't know what else would have changed it as it happened, you know, within the last two years that it started losing its clearness. We have 10 acres, and we do the usual things where we would need water for our own purposes, you know, gardening and family with six kids and grandchildren that I babysit. So we would like to stay where we are and have it remain the way that it was when we bought it, a rural property away from large growth, such as is seen in Stockton, Modesto, and so forth. So other than that, it's basically a plea that we follow the law, we keep things the way that they were meant to be, then I want things to stay the same, the way it was when we bought it. It was a nice, beautiful area with classic features, you know, trees, rolling hills, and it should stay that way. That's the way it was supposed to be, unless it was legally changed, and it was not legally changed. So it's just a plea from my heart for you to follow the law and to let it be what it was supposed to be, regular rural land with agriculture. Thank you.
My name is Gail Withyun. I live in Burson. I'm a newcomer on a permanent basis to Calaveras County. I moved here in August, but my father had owned property here since the 1960s. I don't know a lot of the ins and outs of this, but I have an overriding concern, and that is water. And that's why I want to speak after the lady comes here. I'm concerned about the proposed amendment, the water requirements that such an amendment would let loose, the fact that we have water issues all through the state of California, that we have magazines advising people to zero-scape and not have lawns. And I just feel that the water requirements, which go far beyond anything, the effects would be felt far beyond the physical confines of a golf course, would have ramifications throughout the entire section of the county, if not beyond, are just, at this time, these issues before the state, for our county, for our nation, perhaps, that we should not approve any conditional amendment to, you know, to the proposed, to the zoning. So I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments.
Golf balls.
She brought her golf clubs.
Did you clean that filter between the last time you were here and this time? And is this new?
No, but I have something else new to tell you.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I was just wondering. I was just wondering, I was thinking, I wondered if it filled up that quick, you know? Because it wasn't that long ago, so I was just-
No, some of you saw it at the meeting, Planning Commission meeting, and others didn't, so I brought it. Just like, my name is Lynette Ospital. I reside at 9664 Ospital Road in Valley Springs. I'm representing our family. Our family ranch is right across the road from a golf course. The water is a main issue for us, too. As you probably read in the letter I wrote to you, we've, since January 28th, 2007, we've had nothing but problems with our well. We had to put a new well in then. On March 13th, our pump pressure went low. We had to put, you know, filter in. Every month, we're supposed to change the filter, where you should have four to six months. On the 17th, on September 10th, they took pictures of our well to see if there was any problems with our pipes. There wasn't. So on September 20th, they pulled the pipes out, and they removed one pipe because they thought it was too close to the sand or to the ground. We continued to have problems. On January 20th of 2011, we had air in our line, and they came and checked that, checked the filter. January 26th is when we had the filter, and that's what this filter is. It was caked with sand. They had to rinse it out because they couldn't even get it out of the filter container. He also let go of my air, our water tank to do pressure. His comment was, "You could have a beach here." On February, this is new, on February 25th, our pump went out at 5:30 in the evening. Of course, that was a weekend. So on Monday, they came out, they pulled all the pipe out, thinking there might be a hole in the pipe. There wasn't. It was the pump. The pump was only four years old. It is supposed to last 10 to 12 years. They had to put a new pump in. So this has all happened since the golf course across the way went in. Before that, we had no problem with our well or our water. I have livestock, so it's important that I have water for them. And we can't, I, we can't even drink the water. That's how bad it is. I can't drink it. We can't drink it. My animals are drinking sandy water most of the time. Now it's clearer since they put the new pump in, but once he starts irrigating for the golf course again during the summer, it's going to probably have problems again. The next step is go down deeper. We've already, this has cost our family a lot. It's very, very expensive. So what our family hopes that you will do is to deny this project because it's not a very good project for us. I've had a lot of problems with the golfers. You know, the road, that's another thing. The road is really a two-lane road. Like most of these county roads, it's not meant for all the traffic that's going to be impacted by golf, by the golf course. And now we have big rigs coming down the road. There should really be a speed limit on that road because, I'll tell you what, they're going faster than 55 when they're going down there, and they're taking the middle of the road, and there's no way to get off if they come down the middle of that road, and there's a lot of-
You need to complete your comments, ma'am.
Okay. Well, that's about it. Okay, thank you. I know you folks have a job ahead of you, and we thank you for the job you do.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeremy Terhune. I'm the San Joaquin Valley representative for Defenders of Wildlife, and I'm also the coordinator of Friends of the Lower Calaveras River. Friends of the Calaveras River has approximately 550 members in the lower part of the watershed. We are directly impacted by what happens on this river, and we're all aware of it. Defenders of Wildlife has roughly 2,000 members between San Joaquin County, Calaveras County, roughly, and I'm here just to support all the people that are urging you to reject the proposed amendment and to do the right thing. Thank you for your time, and have a great day.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments?
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Lou Mayhew. Yes, I can. I would like to take a little bit of exception with Assistant County Counsel's description of things. I think a fair argument has clearly been made that this proposed amendment grew out of the last agritourism appeal hearing. of the last agritourism appeal hearing. There were a complex of issues that the board was concerned about, and that was to come back, and I think Chairman Tryon, at that point, suggested that an attempt to clean up outstanding issues should not come back in any way in the context of the Trinitas Golf Course. What we have seen in bankruptcy court is very clear that, as part of preliminary talks, I don't know how you want to describe them, but that the court in December postponed continued hearings to see the outcome of what was going to develop in Calaveras County. That was done. The adversarial case with the county was postponed as a result. Just very recently, the court was waiting for an update from County Council, the bankruptcy court was waiting for an update from County Council on what had occurred at the Planning Commission as a result of comments by County Council. The judge said essentially, "Given that we've gotten this to this point from the motions having been filed in December, and everyone's been working on it, I think if, out of an abundance of caution, we go to March 23, then at least we'll know if something happens on the 15th or not." So, there's a very clear connection. I think that's established in the record. I want to say that I believe the proposed amendment is much weaker than a zoning amendment. Clearly, a conditional use permit, as I look at the code, you would essentially be talking about how to mitigate relatively minor things, and all it would be required to approve a conditional use permit would be Planning Commission approval. I think at this point, to preserve agricultural land in the county, you need to keep a high standard. A zoning amendment is a high standard. I think I would recommend that you keep the golf courses in the recreation zone. Enough said. It's a weaker process. You need a strong, robust process before you're going to allow golf courses in ag land. Just a quick comment on water. I'm going to submit some documents here, which essentially show, we don't know what's happening in Western Calaveras in terms of water. There are two nested wells which will begin to show something of what's going on. The USGS has said that four wells are needed as a start, and eight wells are needed in total. So, we don't know that's directly related to, there are no conditions in the proposed amendments that would in any substantial way restrict water for a golf course to surface water.
Thank you, Lou. Let's see, were you going to drop some paperwork off with the clerk, Lou, you said? Have the clerk running after you there. Lou, you have several letters that are in the record. I think both attorneys have letters in the record, and others have letters in the record asserting that it's your position that there is a tie between the action today and the Trinitas lawsuit, and the board is aware of those, of your statements and those of others. Okay. We will proceed.
Mr. Chairman, Mark Conley, representing KIRC. Let me start with the last issue that the chairman just raised. First, it's not an issue that we have to establish that there was a settlement. Nobody's trying to argue whether there was a settlement or not. That's not really the issue. The issue is, as you stated, is there a link between Trinitas and this amendment? More importantly, the argument is, if this amendment is approved, it provides an avenue which Trinitas has said on the record that it is immediately going to take advantage of. So, it is absolutely foreseeable that if this amendment happens, there will be an application by Trinitas, and that project will proceed. And that's the basis of our argument. The argument is, is that this should really be a project, a program EIR, where you would be considering an amendment, you would at the same time be considering an application for a specific project, and you'll be looking at all those things at the same time. And that's the problem that we have, and I'm addressing the legal arguments right now on the merits and the negative declaration. You basically, our opinion, fragmented the project, the project description, and therefore is not accurate, because intentionally or unintentionally, doesn't matter, it's misleading to the public, who may read it and not understand that there is, in fact, a golf course out there that is going to take advantage of these facts. The evidence that has been presented to you on the legal issue, it's a very small threshold that has to be met to establish a need for an EIR. And I want to talk about odds for a second, because that's, as a lawyer, that's what I talk to my clients about, you know? What are my odds of success? What do you think? In this case, look at the legal tests that are laid out. For a negative declaration, there has to be substantial evidence that's presented. In this case, there's a negative declaration finding out, indicating that this amendment, which will allow golf courses on over 100,000 acres of land in Calaveras County for the first time, which is admittedly a non-agricultural, non-agritourism use, is going to have absolutely no impacts. You've got pages and piles of letters from various people saying it's going to have an impact. If there's found to be an impact, if there can be a fair argument made, supported by substantial evidence, that there may be an impact, then that decision is wrong. And what is substantial evidence? That burden is extremely low, too. It's enough relevant information and reasonable emphasis that a fair argument can be made to support a decision. So, the odds that this negative declaration will survive are extremely small. If there's just a hit on one of those arguments, ag land, water, traffic impacts, growth inducements, anything, then that decision is going to not stand up and withstand any kind of challenge. So, based on that basis alone, on the negative declaration, I think you have to either have an EIR or reject the determination that a negative declaration is appropriate. I want to address a couple of the issues that County Council raised. I've already said...
Mark, you've got about 15 seconds. We have your letters in the record.
Okay. I'll try and wrap it up really quickly. You can make the assumption that an individual golf course, if there's an argument made by County Council, for example, that, I can cite three golf courses that didn't have an impact, but there's golf courses over here that do have impacts, that's not the way it works. The test is, then, there has been substantial evidence that golf courses could have an impact, and a negative declaration is inappropriate. It's not a balancing test. On the final issues, the policy issues, I'll be very brief. You have some important decisions to make. First of all, are you going to give an unfair advantage to legal golf courses that are operating now, are entitled, are operating on appropriate property? Are you going to unfairly burden taxpayers? Because every golf course that's organized on agricultural land is a subsidy based on the impacts that are absorbed by the adjoining agricultural property owners and absorbed by the citizens of Calaveras County, who I hire taxes to support traffic and other impacts, have to bear those burdens. It's terrible land use plan. Golf courses, finally, are not profitable, and they're not profitable as this specific golf course in bankruptcy has demonstrated. And finally, the argument that is just kind of a catch-22. If there are no golf courses that are pending in Calaveras County for application, then why are we doing this? And if the purpose, on the other hand, is to entitle an illegal golf course, you should deny it. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Alice, do you wish to speak?
Yes, I do. Thank you. My name is Alice Rain, and I live in Rancho. And I've been following this quite a bit, a lot of interest and a lot of people. One of the big problems we have right now is the public in general has not been notified of all of this. There's been a little bit about lawsuits, but there has been no proposal coming into any of the newspapers, of Channel 9, of Channel 7, nothing about the magnitude of this project. One of the things I found out by calling CCWD is that Jeff Davidson and four others from the Water District are in Washington, DC, right now lobbying Lundgren for the grants that they need in order to bring water pipes. What they want to do is bring a long pipeline, and this is public knowledge, if you call and talk to them, but they want to bring a pipeline in from Pardee, because there's 31,000 acre feet that CCWD has access to that they're not using, and they can lose because East Bay Muds wants it. The other thing is that if they put the pipeline in, they can utilize that. I asked Ed Pedersen about this, and he said, "Oh, no, it's not going near Trinitas." Well, I found out it is, because the water table in this area is falling a foot a year, and you have to have surface water for a golf course, and they don't have it. They're using well water, which is groundwater. So, and that's one of the big things. The other thing I feel is very important, there's no feasibility study here. So, what's the cost going to be? How much are we going to be indebted? This is a Western Calaveras County project, the whole western end of Calaveras County. So, again, there's water over at New Hogan, which belongs to our CCWD to use. So, we do not know yet if Stockton East is aware of this problem. I called them yesterday and told them. This problem is so big, because you're going to have this major pipeline, which they want to go to Trinitas or Trinitis, whichever, Wallace, Burson, Valley Springs, on over through Milton, and then over to Copperopolis. Now, whether they're going to have two sets of water coming in, one from Hogan and one from East Bay Muds, I don't know. But this thing is bigger, and there's so much going on behind the scenes, and nobody is being informed. So, there's going to be a lot of ramifications on this until everything is out in the open, and this is what I, there's so many areas there I could hit, but I don't want to. I'm just hitting on the fact of the water, which is critical to a golf course, and the very fact of changing the lives of so many people. The people in Valley Springs itself, where I have my glasses made, they didn't know that this pipeline is scheduled to go through their property out on Hospital.
You need to wrap up your comments, Alice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm glad I got here and opened my mouth.
Other comments?
My name is Pat Barrera. I'm from Campusaco. I protest and oppose non-agricultural activities and golf courses in ag zoning, and ask the Board of Supervisors to support the Planning Commission denial and vote no for the following reasons. The Western Calaveras County area has been identified by the Department of Water Resources as critically overdrafted. There is no existing alternate surface water supply to mitigate this overdraft presently. The landowners have not solicited or voted for a water district or created boundaries for one, and yet the county proposes to allow golf courses, heavy water users, in agricultural zone lands, which will increase the cumulative impacts to the underground aquifer, harmful to everyone's water. There has been no full disclosure to Western Calaveras County landowners as to the adverse ramifications to their properties, well water and underground aquifer. The underground water will not be used for the best interests of the people and for the public welfare. It is unreasonable and wasteful. This should be prevented and not encouraged. The inefficient use of water is an unreasonable use of water. The proponent, Calaveras County, proposes to allow other non-agricultural options, which include golf courses, to be included in the agricultural zoning. What is not disclosed to the landowners in Western County is the thief waiting at the back door, taxes, assessment districts, eminent domain, forced well abandonment, and forced great payers to support a proposed surface water project that will be necessary to mitigate water uses for proposed golf courses, including Trinitas. The land has a holding capacity and should not be planned to overburden that capacity. It's an unreasonable use of water in an area already described in overdraft. This will affect everyone's property and water, not just agriculture. County and CCWD trips to Washington, DC for federal funding to promote water pipeline projects continue without full disclosure. Public meetings are notification to the landowners, farms, ranches, and homes, who would be expected to support this water district. There is no information to the landowners as to how much their lands would be assessed, how much this service would cost, and where the boundaries are if they could afford to support them. This is not a simple zoning change. It involves county litigation, water rights, water availability, and a proposed water project, if approved, by the Board of Supervisors, that will allow CCWD a public-private partnership with Trinitas. The county is the proponent of this ag zoning amendment that will allow golf courses and also legalize Trinitas. The proposed zoning amendment and Trinitas did not have far-reaching, excuse me, effects on the lives and properties of the Western County. They should stand on their own merit without interferences into neighboring properties and water supplies.
10 seconds, Patty.
The county's legal issues with Trinitas is a conflict of interest in this matter. Western Calaveras County has had no full disclosure. The water issue and boundaries have not been made public. The affected landowners have had no voice or vote. You are considering this without the landowners knowing the consequences, financial considerations, a blank check obligating our land. You cannot support and ask the landowners to subsidize golf courses where there are aquifer depletions with proposed surface water projects with abracadabra grant funding, unknown conditions, and at taxpayers' expense. If grant funding is obtained...
You need to wrap it up, Patty.
...are still making decisions on private land without full disclosure. The zoning amendment is an intrusion and detrimental to agriculture and violates our water rights, efficient and reasonable use of water, property rights, full disclosure, and an unauthorized financial burden to the landowners and taxpayers. I'm in agriculture. I raise cattle for four years, a Farm Bureau member.
We have the letter, Patty. I think this is your third letter.
I will not support this. Thank you.
Okay, we've got it. You don't support it.
It's going to be difficult for me. I'm Al Segal with the Calaveras County Taxpayer Association, and our board directors investigated the Trinitas issue, even though this item before you is not about Trinitas. And we found that that was a good project, and it was good for the community, but more important, at least for me, it was the person's right to build on their property. It was a property rights issue. And much was said about the zoning code, and a zoning code sometimes does some good, but other times it has a tendency to abuse people whose use is not popular. I'd like to say that it's hard to balance a whole room full of people, but I think that the U.S. Constitution is a higher law than a zoning code, and also a higher law than SEQA. So, the issues that I think would be important on property rights is that a person has the right to use their property, provided they do not harm the neighbors or the public. And the main issue that would be under consideration would be, is that the case or not? If it's not, then whether we like golf courses or not, it's not our business, because it's their property, it's their right, it's their loss if they fail. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good afternoon. My name is Suzanne Ruston. I'm from Mountain Ranch. I have to say, I continue to be astonished that we are even considering this amendment. It seems to me, given the fact that we all know that water is a critical issue for us, and that we don't have a list, as far as I know, of golf developers waiting to develop this, that this must have been put forward for the advantage of Trinitas. And given that we have laws, and they have not been abided by before, how we could even assume or consider that these people would follow the laws that we put down now, since they didn't in the first place, seems to me completely illogical. So, I would just like to say that I'm surprised that we are spending this much time on something that should be patently obvious, that we don't have water, that we don't have room for more golf courses. We already, with respect to this gentleman, we already see the negative impact on the neighbors and the people who are surrounding there who have not been informed of what's been going on. So, I respectfully ask you to deny this request and to go back to what our Constitution does say, which is, we all abide by the laws of our state, our county, and our nation. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard DeBussman from District 5. Even if Trinitas were not involved, the idea of conditional use could open a whole Pandora's box and could be a really bad idea. Are you voting today? I urge you to vote down this amendment.
That's up to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good afternoon, Chairman Tryon and Supervisors. After the appeals vote in 2009, another part of your quote, Tom, was that, quite frankly, if we're looking at litigation and huge controversy rather than just the merits of what we want to do, why bring it back? It's got to be in some environment that we can all have some consensus. The only consensus here amongst all of the people on both sides is that 20-acre minimum parcel size is too small for a golf course. This epitomizes the inadequacy of the initial study and the negative declaration. A golf course, no matter where it's located, has environmental impacts. The question is whether it's appropriate or wise to add golf courses as a conditional use on ag land. And keep it rural, Calaveras agrees with Commissioners Keel and McLaughlin that it is not. This project rests on two unsubstantiated and flawed economic assumptions. First, that a golf course can support agricultural operations that might otherwise not be fiscally viable. And second, that adding more golf courses in Calaveras County will not hurt existing businesses. As two golf course appraisal experts and several golf industry local insiders agree, today's economy, changing demographics, and an overbuilt market are reflected in golf courses closing and once-exclusive country clubs lowering their initiation fees and opening to public golf just to stay alive while costs continue to inflate. While more local, less costly public play options arise, fewer golfers travel distances to play, leaving those courses in areas dependent on out-of-area customers competing for dwindling revenues. Adding already, adding any golf courses in Calaveras County, even by legalizing Trinitas, will contribute to an already predatory local market and threaten the economic viability of the county's six legally established courses. Adopting these amendments would harm local businesses who played by the rules. I'm glad to hear that time spent on this has not been taken away from the general plan. The county needs to adopt, if they adopt, a general plan with a clear vision and goals, policies and implementation measures that are internally consistent and will direct future development projects to locations best suited to support them and uses this, applies this roadmap consistently. It will attract economically sustainable projects and the county will reap the resulting jobs and tax revenues.
You have 10 seconds, Kathy.
Yike. Okay. If it doesn't, you won't. The fact that Trinitas exists and continues to operate illegally represents a failure of county government to protect the health, safety, and welfare and property rights of county residents and business owners who comply with county codes. Please don't compound that failure by weakening the protection for ag lands countywide through these misguided amendments. We are asking you to make a wise decision today that would better preserve the county's agricultural heritage and economy without compromising our zoning codes. Please vote no.
Thank you, Kathy.
Good afternoon. I did submit some comments, so I will not read from my comments. I just want to make a brief statement.
Your name for the record, Holly?
My name is Holly Mines. And what I would like to request, from listening to all the comments that we've heard so far today and following the issue throughout its process, I think that we could all agree that the overwhelming theme here today is that there is a strong belief that there is a connection between the urgency of passing this zoning amendment today and the case of Trinitas. No matter how much it's denied or no matter how much people sitting here in front of us deny that there is that connection, if the powers that be want to show good faith toward their constituents and toward the people who live in Calaveras County, if there is no other proposed project that's waiting for this proposal to be passed, then I would suggest that at the very least, if you can't deny the zoning amendment in its entirety, that you postpone it until the general plan is finished, at which time, the entire zoning code will have to be rewritten. At that time, this issue could be reconsidered. But if you agreed that you would not pass it now, it would be a show of good faith to all of us sitting here that you are admitting that Trinitas will not be benefited immediately by this decision. And if it has to wait a year or a year and a half, if it truly has no connection, then it can wait and every other golf course can too. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Catherine Jackson from Wallace. I bet you think I'm going to talk about protection of the watershed and I'm not. I wanted to detail everything that Holly said and speak a moment about our environment here in this county. I know at the Planning Commission, some of the people who were speaking, who saw that they were opponents to other people, said, "Well, everybody that owns Ag One land, raise your hand." And what they forgot, those of us that were born here, that came here in the last 20 or 10 years are here because our boundary is what our eyes can see. We see rolling grazing lands and forests and streams. We see farming and crop rotation and vineyards. That's what all of us are together about, whether you call yourself constitutionalist, private property, or whatever. That's what we're about. So, I was most surprised that even if a CUP were appropriate anywhere in general ag, that you would limit it to golf courses. There's no substantial evidence of what the conditions and parameters are that would allow a farming operation or a grazing operation to benefit by a golf course. And believe me, I've searched the internet, the latest data I can find. And if you were to just put California golf courses on ag land in there, you would see all these studies coming from special groups, universities. There's one on Zimmerman. I forget the other guy's name. Did a survey. There were 891 golf courses in California, study ends in 2003. The surveys that were extensive enough to help them measure all of the parameters and try to put them in balance were 189 golf courses. They chomped off the top golf courses that showed a net profit per acre of $1.15 for every dollar invested. And then they begin to look at, what are the conditions of these? First thing off the bat is that 40% of them had more than just a golf course, 18 or nine homes. 40% of them were likely to be municipal or public and had already in place those recreational things that may have carried the ag definition in the beginning. They were great. They were vineyards with conference halls and bed and breakfasts and aquarium riding trails and everything that you can imagine. So, the most profitable were not the ones. In fact, less than 40% of the income generated by California golf courses in general is coming from the membership and equity fees, the green and day fees, and the cart fees. The other 60% of that profit that would sustain the ag operation is coming from permits for the lodge to be rented, for clubs and weddings and whatever. It's coming from dining and shopping. Yes, coming mainly from dining and shopping. All of you know that I see the negative deck as just dangling out there in the air worthless to you at this moment and have asked you to consider denying the negative deck. And if you insist on a CUP, we don't have enough evidence to know. It may fit somewhere. So, what I'm recommending, if you open up ag at all, please look at least as far as what your agricultural element is already saying. It may be it's a camping ground, maybe it's a shooting range, a dude ranch, or something else. Don't limit yourselves to a golf course that could be a failing situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Dan Hendricks, San Andreas. I presented an item that's in your packet. I'm the ranch hand that had personal experience picking up golf balls from a City of Vallejo municipal golf course. Well, we kept the cattle out and the golfers out. If you'd like to answer, ask any questions of me, I'm available. I would like to bring up just a real neat thing I found out. A lot of this is perception. This is more philosophy than planning. Perception is defined by Webster's as awareness of the elements of the environment through personal sensation. An item 3B under Webster's 7th Edition is physical sensation interpreted in the light of experience. If you've listened to the Planning Commission tapes or read the packet and all the correspondence in the commission, it's huge decision-making process that went on at that level. And you're going to be reviewing that today. Please listen to your commission. They had a rough time coming to that decision. And I would strongly recommend you vote in favor of the recommendation that's in the packet that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Any other public comments? If so, please come forward.
Colleen Platt, MyValleySprings.com. We submitted comment letters, which we hope you've had time to read. Today, I'll just focus on a few points. First, the negative declaration is an inadequate document and should not be approved. A conditional use permit cannot address impacts if impacts are unavoidable and can't be mitigated. Trinitas, Tuscany Hill, other golf course EIRs were submitted to the county that list many significant and unavoidable impacts, such as loss of ag lands, loss of traditional ag activities, depletion of groundwater, increase in traffic congestion, impacts to air quality, cumulative impacts, lack of compatibility with adjacent uses, urbanization, and indirect growth-inducing impacts. These and other unavoidable impacts will be likely for any golf course project located in the A1 zoning district. The general plan alternatives report lists 288,910 acres of agricultural lands. This is 44% of Calaveras County. The potential for significant and unavoidable environmental impacts from this zoning code amendment is high enough to warrant a complete EIR, not a negative declaration. A second point is, the zoning code amendment is associated with a known specific development project, contrary to statements in the dang deck and in court in the hearing today. Transcripts do show a clear connection between the golf course intending to apply for a CUP and the county's knowledge of this. Clearly, the county knows the golf course intends to file an application if this amendment is approved. The county should not be bringing forward a zoning amendment connected to this controversial golf course and ongoing litigation. Thirdly, project conditions for adding golf courses on ag lands are inadequate. 20 acres is not adequate for a golf course with accessory uses. Average golf course is 75 acres and even a nine-hole golf course would require more than 20 acres to be feasible commercially. In the Planning Commission staff report, a nine-hole Petaluma Golf and Country code listed is 100 acres. Even 100 acres may not be adequate if the purpose of allowing a golf course on ag land is to support and maintain a substantial percentage of that land in agriculture. Parcels need to be large enough to achieve reasonable proportionality between a golf course and agricultural production. And where are the strong conditions and guidelines a property owner or investor needs? Why would the county want to waste a developer's time and money suggesting golf courses might be okay on 44% of county lands when they will have to go through an unpredictable environmental review process with an unknown outcome? This proposed zoning amendment has no usable performance standards. There should be guidelines for proximity and adequacy of roads, water availability and source, location relative to community centers, setbacks and buffering from adjacent uses, and many other conditions that have been suggested to the county to help guide an applicant and minimize negative impacts. We have many other concerns, but I realize my time is just about up here.
Time's up. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, by the way.
Thank you. Joyce Tuckell, MyValleySprings.com, with our remaining two concerns. Fourth, allowing golf courses on ag lands is inconsistent with our existing general plan. The conservation element states, quote, "Preserve and encourage the use of land for agricultural purposes. Allow resource production lands to remain available for agriculture and rural use and enforce right-to-farm provision of the county zoning code." Golfing is not agriculture, just like landscaping is not agriculture. A 20-acre golf course would not support permitted agriculture uses on agricultural property in order to help preserve the agriculture use. Even if the parcel size is increased to 100 acres or more, once land has been converted to golf course development, agriculture production is lost. Once a commercial golf course is built, future agriculture operations on surrounding parcels will also be impacted. The right to farm in the vicinity of the project could be threatened. Our last point, and fifth, the general plan update should take priority over piecemeal zoning code changes. The update is scheduled to be completed this year and should be the county's first planning priority. Adopting new zoning codes now is putting the cart before the horse and sidetracking the planning department. The whole idea of a zoning code update is to bring the county zoning districts into conformance with the new general plan. The draft is expected to be released in April. What will policy be for natural resource lands? Where will people be able to buy property in Calaveras County to avoid traffic congestion and urbanization? A good general plan will give guidance and direction for both growth and preservation of our resources and way of life. Let's wait for the general plan update to be completed and then do a zoning code update. In summary, the negative declaration is inadequate and a complete EIR is required. The second point, this zoning code amendment is improperly associated with a specific development project. The amendment's conditions for adding golf courses on ag lands are inadequate and its basic premise is inconsistent with our existing general plan. The general plan update should take priority over piecemeal zoning code changes. We request the proposed project and the negative declaration before you be denied. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce.
My name is Sandy Young. My husband and I have owned and operated a 300-acre ranch in Mount Ranch for the last 20 years. In the process of that 20 years, we've had many opportunities to confront the zoning and property laws and regulations and issues that come with owning that size property. And as a resident of Calaveras County for that much time, I've also participated in the process of working on our community's community plan and the general plan process. And as such, I respectfully request that you, as our elected officials, honor the legal and ethical processes that every resident of this county has elected you to uphold and that we all have to operate under and that you respect all of the hard work that all of us who have been working on the community plans and general plan have put into the effort and postpone any of these decisions until the organization that those plans were meant to put to the rules of this county be installed. And lastly, I would just like to suggest that you all use a definition of a word, that all of you have... all of you have used in your campaigning, which is integrity. And that's a word that my father defined to me as doing the right thing when nobody is looking. Thank you.
My name is Tom Infascino, and I am making these comments on behalf of the Calaveras Planning Coalition. The coalition recommends that the Board of Supervisors follow the Planning Commission guidance and the staff recommendation to deny zoning amendment 2010-031. I want to agree with Holly. Adopting this zoning code amendment in advance of the general plan update is about as useful as fixing a flat tire on a car with no engine. You can waste your time and money fixing a flat, but the car will still not move. The second I want to agree with Janice Elliott, the proposed zoning amendment will not facilitate resolution of litigation over Trinitas. In fact, it is more likely to spawn one or two more cases against the county. Thus, rather than facing three cases or settling two cases, the county will instead be facing four or five cases from multiple parties, and the validity of the current general plan will be at stake. The great part about speaking last is all the other people made all the good points My next point is that I encourage you not to follow the example of counties that are leading the state in the loss of agricultural lands. A closer look at the counties that allow golf courses on agricultural lands indicates that 13 of those counties have led the state in the loss of irrigated agricultural lands. While a handful of others have succeeded in protecting and enhancing agricultural lands, recognize that that comes at a price. Counties like Napa and Sonoma have had to resort to very restrictive and detailed zoning ordinances regarding golf course development on agricultural lands, and they've had to adopt additional agricultural land protection programs. I believe that there is a brighter future for commercial recreation and for agriculture in Calaveras County. Angel's Camp is promoting itself as a gateway to Sierra adventure to better market and utilize existing recreational resources for fun and profit. The proposed ag and water elements of the general plan will help to stabilize the land and water bases for agriculture in this county. We at the coalition look forward to implementing these initiatives for ag, for recreation, and for economic recovery. Thank you, and may God bless.
Thank you, Tom. Any other public comments?
My name is George Frye. From 1977 until 1984, I served as a planner for Calaveras County Land Use Planning. During that time, we rewrote the general plan, rewrote the zoning ordinance, we, all of us in the planning department. During that time, it was suggested to me that I go back to school, even though I had a bachelor's degree, and get a master's degree in land use planning. I accepted that suggestion, went to Cal, Go Bears. Tom?
That away, George.
Yeah. And I got my master's degree in urban and rural land use planning. I am completely dumbfounded. My first question to this board is, who initiated the request that county council and the planning department bring this issue to the Planning Commission and then on to the Board of Supervisors? It's ludicrous to me. You know, based on my years of experience and education, I just cannot believe that this is happening. You know, I listed down a lot of things. The real issue, in part, is not Trinitas. That has to stand on its own merits because the gentleman who, without any entitlements, decided to build a golf course describes to me what is described in the DSM-IV psychiatric manual as a person with a narcissistic personality. Now, if you're not familiar with a narcissistic personality, it's a person who only cares about himself and doesn't give a damn about anybody else. And that's what you've been dealing with here. So I plead with you today to connect the dots and do the right thing and show the integrity that you ran for in this public office and where you're seated today so that we can finish up the general plan, look at what gets approved, redirect the changes in Title 17, the zoning ordinance, and go on with having the kind of land use planning that many counties in this state have forgotten about and decided that the almighty dollar was more important than anything else.
You need to wrap it up, George.
Okay, I will. I have two things I want to say. The board has heard these things this morning. Number one, today's March 15th. Shakespeare said, "Beware the Ides of March, for they are upon us." I am saying that to you as the community folks that are here. The board already heard that from me this morning. The second thing I want to tell you folks out here is this is Sunshine Week. Now, Sunshine Week is about the sun.
George, you need to address the board. You're not talking to the audience.
Okay, I just wanted to share.
And both those you've already expressed, and your time's up.
Well, just let me finish because they're curious to know what Sunshine Week is, Tom.
That's all right, George. Let us get through the hearing.
So anyway, Sunshine Week is about transparency. And that's what I want to see that continues in county government. And I strongly urge you to deny this zoning ordinance. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. You know, George, the board's thinking in the interest of transparency to put a full body scanner right outside the door before anyone comes in.
You can't embarrass me, Tom. I'm doing theirs by the best.
Okay, are there any other public comments? If so, please come forward. Are we through with public comments? Okay, I'm going to close off public comments. I'm going to bring the discussion back to staff. Whoa, did I miss somebody? Okay. Staff, do you have any additional comments to give to the board prior to board deliberation?
I just have a few comments in response to public comment. I'll talk as loud as I can. I wanted to say that one thing that I'm sure the board's aware, but I just want public to be aware of these.
Speak right into the mic, Janice.
General plan and zoning laws are not set in stone. They are subject to the board discretion to change or make amendments to at any time subject to public hearings and notice. So those who rely on zoning as being there forever, do not do that, please. There was another, there were several comments again about CCWD and a pipeline. This pipeline, whatever CCW doing, is not a county project. If they are doing some type of project, they'll be subject to their own secret requirements as the lead agency, and they would have to acquire easements or do their own condemnation. It's not related to anything that the board's doing today. Notice that this hearing was given as required by state law. With respect to consistency with the general plan, the board has discretion, broad discretion under case law to determine whether or not a zoning amendment is consistent with the general plan. There was a reference to other uses in agricultural to support the financial viability of agriculture. And I would note that the existing A1 zoning code already includes most of the uses that were listed as conditional uses in A1, including racetracks, campgrounds, recreational vehicle parks. When the board adopted that part of the A1 zoning code, the board made a finding that those uses were consistent with the general plan. That's why the board has discretion to determine that this particular use is also consistent with the general plan. And one other comment, it's not a legal comment, but just to let you know, based on the facts, that Sonoma County is one of the preeminent counties in protecting open space and ag land, and the main reason for that is the voters in Sonoma County approved a special tax and creation of an open space district that is funded through that special tax, and they often acquire big chunks of land using that particular tax money, which this county does not have. So the proposal to add golf to the A1 as a CUP was based primarily on the board's discussion in 2009 and also on the letter that we received from the ag coalition, both in 2009 and during this process, where their opinion is different in that they do believe that golf can be a financial help to existing agricultural uses. Those are the only comments that I have.
Thank you. I will now bring the discussion back to the board. I think what I'll do is just poll the board and let everybody say their piece.
Can we take a five-minute break?
Five-minute break? Okay, let's take a five-minute break. Thank you. We'll be on in just a minute. We're back to the board. We've closed public comments. What I think I'll do is just poll each board member, let them give their comments, and at the end of the comment period, the chair will then entertain a motion. I'll start with Darren Spelman. Is this in your district? I believe it is in your district. It's right next to it.
What's that? Well, this isn't about Trinitas. This isn't about Trinitas. And if it was, it's in Gary's district.
Start with Darren. Start with him anyway.
I think this is proper hazing for a new supervisor. Go first. Let's see how it goes.
So you're the new guy. That's what you can expect. You're thrown in the bus first, huh?
They're gonna shove you out there.
Throw you into the water and see how well you swim, huh? Well, I was thinking in my mind before this, I wondered who would go first. And since what I have to say probably will have the effect of a nuclear bomb, I was wondering if it was best to drop it first and have a cleanup or to let the people go first and then let me drop it and then just sweep up the dust. I don't know. But, you know, for those people who are familiar with me in the least, I'm new to this position, so I wouldn't doubt that there's a lot of people that don't know me. But if you've ever heard me speak before or know of me, you know that I do profess to seek out truthfulness and legal grounds for what is being done, especially when it comes to our tax dollars, our land values, et cetera, et cetera. Now, one thing I will say, just as a funny aside before I get started, Catherine mentioned that she recorded a study that they get $1.15 return on a dollar invested for golf courses. What's that?
Worse some.
Worse some.
We're up the board now.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
We've closed public comments. We'll just have board comments at this point, please.
Anyway, I figured that was a 15% on return. I'd like to know who, I want to invest in that place. 15% is good in today's market. But let me go here. I have a bullet list here. Number one, I hear a lot of discussion about ag land. Now, I grew up in Manteca, which is an ag community, always has been. There's definitions in terms of what's considered prime or not prime ag land under the Williamson Act and other state statutes. Mr. Connolly should be familiar with that since he's from Tracy Patterson area, and I believe he does some hunting on his non-prime ag land that has a conditional use permit or something like that through San Juanquin County. But anyhow, there's a difference between prime and non-prime. Most of Calaveras County, with very few exception, is non-prime, which would be something where you would do cattle grazing or possibly olive growing or grape growing, something like that. You're not really going to grow peach orchards or you're not going to grow corn or those type of things, or apple orchards with very much success, although Walensky has a nice apple orchard on his property. But there's only very few places in the county where you could consider it prime to grow things that people would consider that, to meet that definition. And the Trinitas property on Ospital Road definitely does not meet the definition of prime in terms of ag land. So I just wanted to make sure that that distinction was made. Number two, Mr. Frye asked a question about why is this happening now? And I, like many of you, would not deny that there's suspect of the timing. However, whether you like the Trinitas project idea or whether or not you care for the proprietors or proposed developers of that project, the fact remains that regardless of the timing or even, you know, it seems to be, you know, I would concede that, in my opinion, based on my knowledge, that it was conceived or hatched or, you know, started without the proper permits. So I want to make sure that people are clear that I do not believe that this was legal at its inception, either by zoning or proper use of the land as it existed. That's my understanding, anyway. However, all those things aside, there are things that exist in this county currently and have existed for many years. That is, county council and the Board of Supervisors today here are not successful in passing a new resolution for new conditional uses under a conditional use permit for ag lands. I'm just going to give you a short list in the interest of time, but there's many other things that could be added to the list. Things such as the Snyder's Powwow, Ironstone Vineyards, equestrian centers, not limited to Bridlewood in Copropolis, which has camping facilities of the KOA sort, and they have equestrian shows and demonstrations and whatnot. Pumpkin patches, bed and breakfast operations, okay? All of these things are happening. And the fact of the matter is, I've spoken with Mr. Neme, and I want you to know, like I said, I've never taken one dime from the Nemes, and I don't own a set of golf clubs. I have never golfed 18 holes in my life. I drive the cart when forced. But the fact of the matter remains, Mr. Neme is aware of these things, and these particular ones that I named, and there are more, are under the same scrutiny that his proposed operation is. And if the conditional use permit process and the amendments are not changed by this board to give that direction, Mr. Neme is a person who is very capable and intelligent, is not going to allow himself to be pushed off the cliff without grabbing onto the leg of everybody else. So if it is that the board or anybody else here wants to see the Powwow, Ironstone Vineyards, equestrian centers, bed and breakfast operations, and other things that currently transpire on ag properties to go down the toilet, I would move that this board accept what's been presented to us today by county council. And though it may need to be modified in the future, be as that may, this is not an acceptance of Trinitas today. This is an acceptance of conditional use permits for things to occur on agricultural land, things that we've come to know and love about our county and the things that people would not want to see go away. That's my opinion, and some other people may have something different. But if you, people mentioned the idea of legality, of obeying the laws, of being fair. If we're going to be fair, then everybody that operates on ag land better be accountable to the same rules. to the same rules. That's all I have to say.
We'll go to Supervisor Tofanelli. Do you have comments at this time?
Can you, can you come back to me in a minute?
Sure.
I asked him if he could come back to me.
I said certainly. Okay, we'll go to Marita.
I wasn't the planning commission meeting up until the time when Mr. Girmendi made his comments, and then I had to leave, so I was there for most of it. But, I'm really not clear why golf and its accoutrements are being removed from the other zoning designations, and so I'd like an explanation on that. Thank you. That's one. Do you want me to just go through some of my questions? These are not my comments. These are just some of my questions. Janice, or Darcy, on page three of twenty-seven, under the definitions, I understand that what we'd be saying is you could have golf and a snack shack, or a snack bar. One, would you be allowed to have a liquor license and/or beer or wine? That doesn't say anything. And two, I really feel that if we're going to do this, then we need to do it, or we don't do it. And if you're going to have a nice golf course, which of course I would hope that we would have in Calaveras, then you would need more than just a snack bar hamburger stand that you have at the football games at Bret Hart. So, I just felt like that was a compromise of some kind. Is somebody doing the Buddha bell here that I need to?
It's outside.
Oh, the Buddha bell, okay.
It's our version of the Gong Show, is it?
Oh, the Gong Show, okay. So, and then accessory dwelling, I'm not really clear. I'm sorry, I have to, this was just overwhelming amount of information. I thought there was something about an accessory dwelling. Good, I could be wrong. Also, driving ranges were a no, but what about putting greens? And if there's, if we went from twenty acres to a hundred acre minimum, then you might be able to have room for a driving range. And what would be wrong with having a driving range at a golf course? And is a putting green was not defined as anywhere, so that should have been in there. On page nine of twenty-seven, we talked about agricultural and forest, and under the discussion, under B, and, and I'll go back on my comment, because I think we should have a performance And so, I felt that if we did that, performance standards, and we've talked about them before on other projects, so that if a developer comes in, be it with a commercial or subdivision, whatever, if you have a list of some performance standards, they kind of know even more, they know ahead of time. It reduces the cost for them, it reduces the cost and time for the county. I just put in one for one, or two for one, meaning for every acre you put in golf, you have to have the acre in ag land, or two acres of ag to one of golf. So, I think most of the other questions I have, and then I have some comments. So, did you want to answer the questions? How would you like to work it out?
Yes, I'd like her to answer. I'd like you to complete all of your questions and your comments, so that we can go to the next person. And then when we have all given our comments, then I'll open it up for board discussion between each other, if they wish to comment on the others' comments, and when we finally get the board through commenting, we will entertain a motion.
Okay.
So, just because you go last this time, Steve, doesn't mean, I'm still going to open it up. Everybody will have a right to comment on others' comments, or change your mind, or have someone persuade you, or you persuade somebody else.
Go ahead, Janice.
Okay, Janice Elliott, County Council's office. First question was why golf courses are being removed. George and I sat down when we were getting ready to bring this to the public review, and looked at all the different zoning districts in which golf courses and country clubs were listed, and we could find no consistency whatsoever between those zoning districts. There were, one time it was a conditional use, sometimes it was a permitted use, and we looked back as far as we could in the history. I even briefly spoke to Bob Sellman about it, and nobody knows how, where, or why those ended up there. So, at George's recommendation, that golf courses really don't belong in industrial zoning districts or commercial districts, and with respect to some of the issues related to rural home industries and rural commercial, he requested that we delete them from all the zoning districts except the recreational district, where listed in, in conjunction with master planned residential, and obviously the proposed amendment here. That was the main reason. Can you have alcohol in a snack shop? Alcohol and alcohol licenses are generally done, as you know, through the ABC, and as long as the particular use is consistent with the zoning district, the county can sign up on the alcohol license. We don't actually address serving alcohol anywhere in the zoning code, you'll note, because it really isn't an issue that the county regulates, it's more of an ABC regulation. So, if they wanted to sell some type of alcohol in a snack bar, they could probably apply to the ABC. I'm not that familiar with ABC rules on that, other than I do know there are some regulations they would have to comply with. I don't believe they're serving alcohol out there now, but I, I'm not sure. And that's the only snack bar that I'm familiar with at this point, with a golf course. Most golf courses have clubhouses and restaurants, and yes, they generally do serve alcohol. So...
So, why not allow a clubhouse?
Well, a clubhouse is a separate conditional use, and the reason why it is listed as You have the ability to do several things. One is to define your project to address those impacts, so that the project description mitigates any potential impacts. Or you can agree to the conditions of approval in a conditional use permit that mitigate any impacts. So, George felt that since there are two separate types of uses, that if you had two different types of conditional use permits, you could tailor the conditions to the uses, and also enforce the conditions separately. And again, going back to, to conditional use permits and uses, we always go back when we're talking about it in the planning round with the Tamarack Music Festival, and the issues that were raised there, and the fact that you actually did revoke a conditional use permit based on issues with a project. So, that is why they're in there separately, and you'll note that clubhouse requires prior approval of a golf course, because you don't want a clubhouse standing alone in the middle of agricultural land. Does that answer your question?
So, when you apply, if you apply, you could apply at the same time for golf and a clubhouse for, at the same time?
You could.
Okay.
There's no guarantee you're going to get both.
No, understand that.
But you can apply for both, yes.
Understand.
Or just one, whichever, whatever the applicant prefers.
Okay, understand.
Accessory dwellings, since there wasn't really a question, I just note that state law provides that accessory dwellings are mandatory ministerial permits in all zoning districts, basically, with the exception that you are allowed under state law to make certain findings, such as health, public health, safety, or, we've done it in other projects where we've made a determination that there's insufficient water in the area to serve accessory dwellings, so we have not allowed accessory dwellings. But, that's not something being proposed as part of the Title XVII amendments here. It's already in the code.
Okay.
So, driving range and putting greens, the, the primary difference is that a driving range can be standalone, as an example in Valley Springs, and they generally have a lot of lights associated with them. And the, the definition of golf course here is excluding any type of artificial lighting for the golf course itself. A putting green is not defined, to me, a putting green would probably be, could be part of a golf course, similar to what they have at the existing golf courses. It doesn't have a lot of impacts, it's not generally lighted separately. A driving range, a standalone driving range is much different from areas on an existing golf course where you can just, you know, practice your, practice your swing. I'm not a golfer, so I may be using the wrong terms, but that was the distinction there, that we didn't want a standalone driving range in the middle of agricultural land with lights.
So, could you not say that you could have a driving range? But it would have to, that would be a condition, you know, there'd be no lights. When the golf course closes at sundown, the driving range closes at sundown, the same hours.
You could do that if you wanted to, to amend the definitions.
I guess, if we're doing it, whether we do it now or we do it in two years, to me, the question we would need to adj, I've been on the board long enough to know that if we don't put something in, or we don't define something, we get caught up in, like where we are now. I'm just trying to avoid that.
Well, as apparently proposed, you could not have a lighted drive, driving range on A1 land.
Okay.
On, with respect to the performance standards and the one-for-one or two-for-one mitigation, that is, that is something that's actually currently being discussed as part of the general plan. That would be related to all conversion of agricultural land, as opposed to a performance standard in a particular zoning district. That is why it is not included in here, because the board has not seen the draft of the general plan yet, and that's something the board will have to discuss. But, the board is free to add any performance standards that they want to within a zoning code. I just note that that particular one's not here for that reason.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that complete all your answers to the questions?
The questions, yeah. Come on.
Tom, I'll, I'll, may I ask one question of Janice?
Janice, I have a question about that. I remember reading in the Ag Yelmont, the part about compensation for the conversion of ag land. I wasn't clear, and whether that would apply when the ag land wasn't actually being converted. In other words, there's, this is a use permit, it's not converting the ag from A1 to residential. Is it your interpretation that it would apply?
I haven't made that interpretation, because...
Oh, okay.
I don't actually have a general plan yet that's final to, that's going to address those issues. It may actually say that any type of, of use that's not food or fiber production would require that, but I don't know the answer to that yet.
Okay.
Janice, will that be at the discretion of the board, or is that state law?
No, that's totally at the discretion of the board, subject only to recent case law that limits, very recent case law that limits some of your ability to require a conservation use as a mandatory condition of conversion. That area of law is changing almost as fast as marijuana. Which we all wish we had.
Where's the marijuana? We all have a headache. Okay, will you give your comments?
I'm going to give my comments. I, I want to make it very clear, it was the board who brought this up in 2009, it was not staff, that we modify or look at adding golf to the A1. So, if we want to pick on anybody, it's, we need to pick on the board.
I was in here.
But you are a supervisor now. That's...
Guilty by association.
Yeah. Most of the ag land that we lose, everybody's bringing up, we have 288,000 acres of ag land, we're going, it's all going to become golf courses. Most of the ag land we've lost have been due to subdivisions and commercial developments, not golf. So, that's where we lose our ag land, and you can just take a look at San Joaquin, or even Calaveras. In terms of the economics, you know, golf's not making money now. You know what? A lot of things aren't making money. The decision that we're making, the decision, the vote I make, is for 20 years out. It is not for what's happening today. If someone wants to come in, put in a golf course, and they don't make money, that's their problem. They want to put in a commercial development, and it doesn't make money, that's their issue, their risk. They want to put in a subdivision, and it's not doing well, that's their decision, their risk. And so, the fact that golf's not making money, golf courses are closing, that's the decision of the people that invest the money in a project, whatever that is. I do, Colleen Platt, Ms. Platt, sort of alluded to some of the things when she talked about all the reasons why we should vote no on a negative deck. And I'm sort of turning some of those around, because I wrote a lot of things that I felt we, if we do this, or if it comes about, there needs to be performance standards. Some, Ms. Elliott referred to as the two, whether it's two-to-one or one-to-one, on ag land conversion in the general plan, I think that should be a performance standard. I think if we, again, we're addressing golf here on ag lands, and if we set up criteria ahead of times, we could define it, and it needs to be on major collectors, it needs to use reclaimed water, it cannot use groundwater for golf, it needs to have buffers, the ag use must be adjacent to the golf. I wasn't real clear, though, about where something should be a precondition versus sequo. There's, again, there'll be no conversion of prime, unique, or farmland of statewide implications. I believe we have to have mitigation for habitat, which means a management plan. These would all be performance standards that would put, be put in. The percent of the land in ag versus in golf, open space, this is something, I believe a term that May Hughes might have used, but define reasonable proportionality. I think it's important that that, which would really go back to the percent of land in ag and percent of land in golf. And I agree with the recommendation of the farm coal, of the ag coalition, though I know the ag coalition is split on this. We heard, you know, Pat say she's been a member of the Farm Bureau, the Farm Bureau's part of the ag coalition. They have supported this, though they were not here today, but they were, they recommended the hundred acres. So, those, my general, oh, wait, there was one other. Muriel Zeller wrote us a letter, too, and she sort of put it quite well when, she said when, in ninety-eight, and this is an example of where the ag community is split, when Senate Bill 985 closed numerous loopholes in the Williamson Act program, farmers and ranchers considered it a major victory to ban water, ski lakes, golf courses, driving ranges, and ball fields from agricultural preserves. Presumably, these same farmers and ranchers would not want a golf course next to their agricultural preserve. But we know an agricultural preserve is a Williamson Act. Williamson Act does not have golf courses, but now all of a sudden you're in A1, and you can have a golf course. So, there's sort of a dichotomy there. I will be voting, or supporting... I will be voting, or supporting unless a colleague can change my mind, no on the negative deck. And, staff made a lot of wonderful arguments in their staff report, that everything's project-driven. But, as Ms. Platt brought up, there's a lot of the same kinds of issues, and let's say, even subtracting out performance standards, that need to be addressed, no matter where a golf course is located. And, I think she had a lot of merit to many of the examples she gave, so I will be voting no on that, that it would need an environmental impact. And, I truly do not want the county spending money on this, because at this time, I'd rather wait till after the general plan is in, and we do it under one price, under one ticket. And, unless there are specific performance standards involved, I will not support having golf on A1 land as presented to the board. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You want to go to Gary?
You want to go, or do you want to stick to the?
No, Gary, you want to go?
Go ahead.
Am I going to convince you?
Well, it's, I'd be interested in what you have to say.
Marina's open.
Chocolate.
Chocolate. I might have had some chocolate. You know, this is, this, I've had her packet for quite a while. I read this thing. There's a lot to read here. There was a lot of emails. There was a lot of letters sent, even I went over and picked up at the clerk's office, even more letters. There's just, Marina's correct, there's just a tremendous amount of information here that we had to pour through. I've read shorter novels when I was in high school.
Which you and you I did.
And, what does that, what does that all mean? It comes down to this, it's a very difficult decision that all five of us have to face here. I'm sure, I'm not alone in, in my thoughts of how difficult we have a decision in front of us, and going either way, and thinking about it, what's right, what's wrong. I truly did not want to tie any of my thoughts to a specific project that's been mentioned many, many times here in this boardroom, when I was going over this information and trying to make a decision on it. I do have a couple of questions of counsel, and I posed one of the questions yesterday in a conversation that Janice and I had had on some of this information, and that had to do with country club. And, what's written here is, it says, "Country club means a social or recreational facility that sells memberships and offers to its members access to its facilities that typically include recreational." And, I think the key here, it says, "typically include recreational sports facilities such as golf, tennis, swimming, or polo." And, I don't know where we came up with polo, because I don't know of any polo grounds here in Calaveras County.
There's always the first.
There's always the first. "A country club may include a building that contains a restaurant, bar, and meeting areas, or a clubhouse." So, I'm not sure this particular wording, if we were to adopt this, this particular wording is clear, because there's facilities now, such as Greenhorn, or, what's the one in Copper?
Saddle Creek.
That have, it says, "typically include facilities such as golf." They may not have tennis there. They may not have swimming. Does this mean that they don't have golf, but that they have tennis and swimming, and they sell memberships, or then a country club? Or, if they just have polo, are they a country club? I think that particular section is very vague to me, and it could be interpreted many different ways, the way it's written. And, I'm not sure what your, can you tell me again, your take on that particular section, and why it was written that particular way?
Well, first of all, the used country club was in the zoning code, without a definition. I don't believe any of the facilities in the unincorporated part of the county would constitute a country club. I think that what we're thinking about more are golf courses typically with a clubhouse. Saddle Creek has its own zoning code, and I didn't have a chance to look at it, but I think they actually define their uses, and they may use the term "country club," I'm not sure. Greenhorn's not in the county, so I don't know exactly how they're defined.
No, that's a good point.
And, Sequoia Woods, and Meadowmont, and La Contenta, La Contenta are similar uses, but technically, this comes from other definitions used throughout, actually throughout the United States, relative definitions throughout the United States. And, there are, there are some country clubs that go beyond the typical golf course and clubhouse, and there's actually one that has polo, that I am very familiar with, where my parents used to live. And, it's a combination sporting event field and polo field, along with tennis, swimming course, but no golf course. So, the goal here was to define country clubs, although George recommended that we actually take a country club out of all the uses, because we don't have a country club in this county, in his opinion, and my opinion, too. So, if you wanted to strike that, we could simply strike that at this point, because we don't need it. We were just trying to make a distinction between more broader uses than a golf course and a clubhouse, because we were separating those two uses for purposes of A1. This combines them all into one particular use, country club, but we did propose striking it from all the zoning districts, because we don't have one. So, it was basically there as a stakeholder for anybody in the future who wanted to make or propose an application that could make a distinction between country club and golf course clubhouse. But, they would also have to propose amending a zoning code to add this particular use. And, I think the thinking there is that at some point in time, we are going to have to go back and revise the recreational zoning district. As you're well aware, it has many permitted uses in there that cause a lot of problems. That would be the most likely place where we would stick a country club. Probably as a conditional use, though, not as a permitted use, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
But, it's not necessary for purposes of what we're doing today, if we want to propose a strike.
To your question Marina asked, if she could have a follow-up question.
Yeah, I'm not, Janice, real quick, you could have a golf course and a clubhouse slash country club that's private. I mean, I think of Sequoia Woods as being more of a country club than necessarily a A country club, to me, is something that's usually private, and it's membership-driven, and there isn't any reason someone couldn't come in and apply for a conditional use permit for a golf course, country club, because they want it to be private. We're not saying this has to be a public facility.
Well, if you look at the definition of golf course, it doesn't make a distinction between public or private. It includes both.
Right.
Okay? A country club is typically completely private. Sequoia Woods, at least the last time I was there, you can eat in the restaurant as a member of the public. So, again, it would not necessarily meet the definition of a country club. We don't have any in this county, at least that's my opinion. But, I, there are examples of them in other counties, and so, that is why we proposed this definition, to make a distinction between, and obviously, somebody stuck it into the zoning district at some point in time, because that use is littered throughout Title 17 for some reason, although we cannot figure out why.
So, if you had a clubhouse, would you be allowed to have tennis, swimming, and polo? Again, assuming conditional reason.
Not under the current definition as being proposed.
You'd just be like swimming and dining.
A building at a golf course or country club that contains a restaurant, bar, or meeting rooms.
Okay, that's the same for both.
Right.
Can you say that again? I'm sorry.
A clubhouse is defined as a building at a golf course or country club that contains a restaurant, bar, or meeting rooms.
Well, I think the way this is written, again, in a conversation I had with you yesterday, it doesn't, it, and I'm not in favor of the way it is, because somebody could have a, could open a swimming pool and have a clubhouse there, just for the swimming pool, and sell memberships for it, and have a restaurant and a bar in there, and it'd be well within the rounds of their zoning code, and call it a country club, and then, under the definition, it doesn't fit. You couldn't allow a country club. So, I think there are reasons to have them further defined on where they are permitted, and what exactly a country club is. I don't think this fits that definition. It may be in other codes, in other counties, but I don't know how they're dealing with it in other sections of their codes, if it's as vaguely written as this. I mean, she's right. You could have, as long as you don't call it a country club, you could still have a golf course and a clubhouse, and you could sell memberships, and you could cordon off part of the, your clubhouse, and say, "This is for private members only," and it could, in the definition, be considered a country club, section of a golf course, or whatever it is, facility, a polo facility.
It's, well, except for.
I didn't mean to open a can of worms here, but we had this conversation yesterday, too.
Right, you do. And, in your application for a conditional use permit for a clubhouse, you have to define your uses, and that's where the county would review the potential uses and make a distinction between, and if it's vague and ambiguous, and you want to change it, that's fine, but there are differences between clubhouses and country clubs per se, and the goal was to not allow country club uses in an A1 zoning district. Because, the planning department, I'm not a planner, but the planners consider that more of a commercial recreational use, as opposed to something, something that can support agricultural uses. But, you can clearly strike that if you want, and change however you want to do that.
So, what you're saying is that a country club would be in a commercial use?
A country club standing alone is considered more of a commercial.
Okay, interesting. Shouldn't I going to have a country club standalone?
Probably not.
Probably not.
Correct. That's why we don't have one.
Unless your ag land has a huge lake on it, and you want to commercially turn it into a swimming pool, and put up, and sell memberships to it.
No, but we'd like to have the kids fishing clinic there.
But, this is a conditional use permit, so the board, it does have to have an environmental review. It does have to have conditions attached.
Swimming pools are already considered accessible.
It's not a ministerial act.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we're still with Gary, so we'll go back to Gary here.
There was a comment made, I think, by Mr. Segalia about property rights, and a person has a right to do on their property what they want to do, unless it affects other neighbors, surrounding people. You know, obviously, the amount of comments that we received from neighbors surrounding a specific project here, it's actually, is affecting them. I think if it wasn't, we wouldn't be hearing the amount of people come up here and talk about how it is affecting them. The other thing I wanted to bring up, as Marina touched on, was the closing of golf courses. Well, there's closing of many businesses throughout the state and the nation right now. And, again, that has to do with the times we're living in right now. I don't want to stop somebody from starting a business. I mean, that's, that's, they're right, if they want to start a business, and whether what economic times or climate it is they're trying to start it, they can fit, they can either fail on their own, or they can succeed on their own. I'm not here, it's not this board's decision to determine whether you can open a business or not, and whether you want to or not. I'm not, that's totally, I'm in the business myself, and right now, business, the steel business is not very good right now. And, I'm unable to bid on a certain project here up on the hill. There's going to be a ton of steel in it, so.
Is that because you're a supervisor?
Pardon me?
Is that because you're a supervisor?
That's because I'm a supervisor.
Did you want to step down?
If economics get any worse, I might. But, I only have till March 31st. But, again, you know, that argument, I cannot, I don't agree with at all, because anybody starting a business at any specific time throughout history and in the future, it's up to them, it's up to them to make it succeed, or whether it fails. That's America. The other thing I wanted to touch about, was already been touched about, is that the timing of this? And, people were talking about the timing of this. This was given direction by this board back in October of 2009, to staff to do this, and they said back then, when we gave them the direction, that it was going to take this time period to get it back to us. They said anywhere from 18 months to two years. Well, it's about 17 months, 16, 17 months. So, the timeframe is correct. It just happens to show up at a certain time, and with that time, we had no idea that there was going to be any, any legal proceedings against the county, as far as a bankruptcy quarter on a specific project or not. So, you know, that, that argument, it falls on deaf ears to me. I totally disagree with that. The other thing I wanted to bring up was, not, there was like 23 people that spoke. 22 of them spoke against it, and the one guy that spoke for it is gone. But, not, and all of the comments that we got, and all of the emails, and all of the, I mean, that's just right here. Part of this has to do with deleting golf courses in certain zones, and not one person spoke about that. And, it's defining golf courses. It says, "The recommendations are to delete golf course and country club as either a permitted or conditional use from rural commercial zones, rural home industry zones, local commercial C1 zones, general commercial C2 zones, professional office zones, light industrial M1, and business park M4 zones." No one spoke about that. And, I know that there's industrial corridors, there's, in some of the community plans, that there was commercial. This, right now, they're either conditional or use permit, or permitted, that you can build golf courses in any of those zones. No one spoke anything about that. And, it doesn't say in those, a lot of those, what type of waters to be used. I just don't, I don't know why that wasn't a red flag to anybody, that at least we're correcting this, and eliminating it from certain zones. We are putting it in an A1, being asked to put it in an A1 zone, but I don't think we're going to lose 100,000 acres to golf courses. Again, even, we were in booming times, it would take well over, my estimate, it would be probably $2 to $3 million to put in a golf course. Primarily, most of our ag in this county is cattle industry, or other industries that have to do with livestock. For someone to come up with, like Tom Tryon, $3 million to put in a golf course, being a cattle man, I don't think that's feasible. So, I don't, the story about, we're going to now have 100,000 acres worth of golf courses, I don't see it happening at all. I think that the staff came back with something that they were given direction to do by a majority of this board. How, and at that time, that that was taken in October 2009, that vote to do this, I don't know if peoples have changed, their ideas have changed, but obviously, at that time, we had more than three people, or more than two people, that were willing to do this. And, you know, I may not be able to agree totally with the negative deck that was prepared, but I think staff did a diligent job. They did a very good job. They came back with what they were asked. They came back within the timeframe that they were asked to do it. I also want to say, I agree with Marina. they were asked to do it. I also want to say I agree with Marina. I had it in my notes here about performance standards. I agree with that. I think some of the conditions placed would have to have a lot of the things that she mentioned. I don't think, I'm in agreement that I don't think 20 acres is an adequate size. I think that needs to be increased. It does speak about a nine acre golf course. If you talk 75 acres is a minimum needed for an 18-hole golf course, then obviously you would need at least 40 acres for a nine-hole golf course. But I think, I would be supporting of it if we could address some of the issues as far as some of the performance standards we could write into it that Marina spoke about and maybe come back with some adjustments to the negative deck. That's where I'm at.
Okay. Steve Walls in your court.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the people who came out today. Really, it was one of the best public hearings I've been to in my six years and three months.
They were well behaved.
It was, well, it was a broad base, both geographically and ideologically, crowd and it was succinct. It was, the issues covered, were extensive and indicative of the numerous moving parts to this beast. It's hard to keep up with and the voluminous. I wanted to go into a little bit of context here. I believe that up to this point, there were at least 2,800 pages of golf-related business that has come before the board over the last couple of years. And I believe that the comments that came in in the last four days put us over 3,000 easily. And to some extent, I have to say that I'm, I look around the world today and I look at the issues facing this county. We just learned that we'd been rated the 19th most economically stressed county in the country. We look at nuclear meltdowns in a place that's kind of upwind from us. We're looking at a lot of things. And I find it to be a little sad that we've spent as much time and have devoted as much tremendous staff, skill, and energy to this one piece of recreational activity and probably to the expense of many things that some of us might think are more important. It's not that it's not important to the people making the application or the people who are neighbors to it, but I find us to be so out of proportion. And to me, that's the greatest regret. There are many other issues that have come up and I'd like to comment on some of them. Some of them are broad-based and maybe not relevant to the consideration, but because they keep coming up over and over again in this and other contexts, I feel a need to comment. The first has to do with the U.S. Constitution and what's its relationship to this process. Some people think that the Constitution gives you the right to do anything on your property with the caveat that you can't really do overly much harm to the property rights of the people around you. Actually, there's a couple of other things that go with this. One is that the Constitution and subsequent Supreme Court interpretations of it give certain rights and responsibilities to the states. And in turn, the states give certain obligations and responsibilities to local government. So the continuous effort to put this outside the constitutional process strikes me as ludicrous. And to me, it's real important to get back on some basic legal ground that is based in real constitutional law, includes those different parts of government and the checks and balances that went into the original Constitution and have subsequently over lots of years been interpreted. And we are acting as a board in that context. And that's why it's so important that we try to figure out what the rights of applicants are in relation to everybody else around. Otherwise, what you wind up is the people who came last exercising their property rights at the expense of the people who came before them. And there's a need for balance in this county and we fight continuously between been-hers and came-hers, except that changes every few years because you become another thing over time. But it strikes me that that's another part of our context here. And what we're doing, and I want to just reiterate it again, is legitimate and it's important. And hearing you in that is part of that process that I believe the founders and writers of this Constitution, that we've all lived by as a people over many, many generations. It strikes me that we need to be based in that, but not delusionally. Many other issues. The timing of this, as people have already said, sort of, we set out on a course a couple of years back and here we are. But I could not have imagined a more unfortunate set of testimonies that came out of the bankruptcy court. And so it's not that people are just making this linkage up. It's that some people are attempting to link this for their own purposes and their own ends. And I find that very unfortunate and also part of the drumbeat of the discrediting of local governments and all governments that goes on. We can't have a number of venues and having different kinds of stories be conveyed without a public that becomes confused or suspicious. And that certainly is in evidence today on the timing issue and the linkage When we talk about the issues involved in this, the first that comes up is the negative declaration. I agree with the previous speaker that one of the things that's important in all of this is the lands that were taken out of golf potential. I don't know whether that's important to those owners. I don't know whether they've been thoroughly notified. I don't know whether there's concern about it, but I do know there's impact. When you own acreage and you have the right to do something and it's taken away, there is an impact. And I find it hard to agree with a negative deck in relation just to that interest, let alone the implications for a couple hundred thousand acres of ag land in Calaveras County that may be open to that. I think the impacts are clear enough and the legal basis that was discussed in the public testimony is strong enough to lead me to be opposed to voting a negative deck for this particular proposal. There's so many other things. Equal application of law, as Frances first spoke, I think she was the first speaker or one of the first today, said that the common denominator between us all is a question of law. Supervisor Spellman raises the issue quite accurately that for a long time in this county, we appeared to have not applied our own codes and our own processes to a number of projects that now live among us. And the question is whether we have an equal application of law. At what point do we decide we're going to if we failed in the past? And for me, right now, to have integrity, governments, as you know, all over this country are being attacked for lack of integrity. And the question is, is integrity to say, well, we've always done it this way and therefore we should continue to do it? Or whether we draw a line and say that we're going to actually look at our codes, that we're going to apply them not retroactively, but proactively, and we will judge each project that comes before us? And for that matter, the relationship of our policy to this kind of project, will we do it with some consistency from here out? As people say, elections matter. And what we do around our codes and how we enforce them have a lot to do with outcomes. Water issues keep being raised. And it's true that when you convert different kinds of lands to different kinds of activity, it has impacts on many different parts of infrastructure. But water has been a big one in relation to the golf proposal that's before us. By the way, I didn't mean to ask a question at the outset of this, which I'll ask now. How many golf proposals have we had before us over the last, say, eight years?
The last eight years? A golf course? I can think of two off the top of my head.
Yeah, so we're...
Possibly three.
Within eight?
Within eight years? Don't bet me on that.
Yeah, okay. Well, my guess is it's maybe one with some coming in toward the end of that period. But at any rate, the fact that we're talking in the abstract, but that we're really dealing with one thing that's been before us is also difficult to reconcile. And so in looking at the water issue in that part of the county, we've got three different reports this board of supervisors to receive. One from people who are opposed to the project saying that the water was inadequate and that the situation was dire. We had another one from the advocates of the proponents of the project that said there was plenty enough water and this might even save water over time. And then we had the county, I'm actually sort of summarizing here, but they were lengthy documents as well. The third, this is sort of a three bears story. The third one commissioned by the county said, by George, we don't know enough. We have, we have an area that's right on the cusp of an aquifer that's going down at the rate of one to one and a half feet per year, even in good years, and that most of the draw on that happens in the Central Valley due to unfortunate kinds of development that other boards of supervisors, not ours, screwed up. The problem here is that people in this county are affected by that. And so is our ag community and so is almost everything else around here because people now are trying to take our surface water for their own use as a result of previous decisions to pave over some of the best ag land in the world. So when we talk about water and projects and opening doors to more projects on dry land grazing, for instance, areas, we wind up with a water problem that we don't know enough about to make decisions and certainly don't know enough about to say that these kinds of considerations have a negative deck impact. We've talked a lot and there was testimony and I actually saw that Commissioner Mason lauded the ability of a couple of counties to reconcile golf with agriculture. And looking at all of them, it appears that most of the counties didn't do that and that they included golf in agriculture, those that have done so, on the way out of the agriculture business. They pretty much liquidated their ag and then still wanted some open space and facilitated golf and conversion in some counties. Napa and Sonoma are actually quite different. And those counties were called out by this commissioner, at least one of the counties. And what I note there, having gone through both, is that they all have the things that Marina, the conditions that Marina suggested. But I also want to outline a few more. Actually, I didn't have a chance to write all of hers down, so I may be a bit repetitive, but I think they're important to outline. First, that a buffer, a lot of this issue where we are down there might have been solved by buffering it because people who have lived there for a long time don't necessarily want to live in a golf course community or have their houses peppered by errant tribes. Secondly, that golf is a secondary use. The integrity of our ag zoning has to be, whatever value-added work, whatever agritourism is part of that, the integrity of our ag zoning code has to include ag as central to ag zoning. I don't understand how it's possible to do this otherwise. I also find it difficult to be doing our zoning code at this late date when we're trying to be consistent with a general plan that is not yet complete. So we would have to be quite ingenious or clairvoyant to be able to actually accomplish that consistency. And if perhaps, as I would guess, the general plan has some things that might differ with this, we'll be rewriting our ag zoning code and trying to reconcile and equalize or make consistent this only a number of months from now. Or as Marina would say, years. Here's a few other conditions that are important. Make sure it's compatible with the neighboring agricultural uses. Sonoma and Napa has that in there. We've certainly heard some word on that here today. Avoid major problems by not approving the golf courses with adjacent housing developments. That's also in Napa and Sonoma. If we do use reclaimed water or public surface water only instead of wells, you might avoid some land use conflict and you'd be consistent with Sonoma. Locate golf courses near infrastructure like roads level A through C or make that a condition of putting in and you would be consistent with Sonoma. If you limit the use to golf and not restaurants, lodges, and resorts, you would be the same as Sonoma. If you excluded prime ag land, which I've heard from a number of people, you would be agreeing with none other than Mike Delorto, who testified at the last, at the, I read in the Planning Commission hearing. Anyhow, somebody said that integrity has something to do with doing the right thing when no one is looking. I wonder whether, what you do when everybody's looking, because that's kind of where we are in this one. But I do, I do have a couple last observations. My mother's name was Lothrip. And 18 generations ago, a fellow was let out of the jails in England having preached a rather unpopular doctrine in the Church of England, something about equality and the word of God as something that's done through the human existence. I've read it, but I can't exactly summarize it. It's quite arcane at this point. But he left and went to Massachusetts on the second boat after the Mayflower. And since then, we've had 17 generations of Lothrips on family farms in Lexington, Massachusetts, during the Revolutionary War, I might add, Maine, near Wiscasset, Nova Scotia, and Manitoba. We have had close to 17 generations in some form of farming, although they skipped one that was a pirate apparently, a captain. All of that said, those voices do ring at a moment like this. And that family tradition matters to me. And I have to say that it's nearly impossible for me to come to the notion that golf and ag are the same thing. It's recreational. I do believe in value-added, ag-based things on ag land. But golf as an ag activity or as part of agritourism just doesn't pass the history test for my family and I choke on it.
Does that complete your comments?
It does.
Okay. I'll give my comments then.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to mention that I will vote no on both the pieces of this. However, if a majority...
You're going to vote yes on deny.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm going to vote, you're right. I'm voting no on the negative deck. I would vote yes to deny. However, if a board majority appears to favor the package, I would urge the chair to go over the specific conditions outlined by Supervisor Callaway and myself to see whether there's a majority that might attach those to this package.
Okay. I'll come to myself. I'd also like to thank you all for the cordial and professional way that you conducted yourself in the meeting. Some of you even stuck to the three-minute timeline. So I thank you for that. In fact, I think the board's going to end up taking long... In fact, I think the board's going to end up taking longer than the 28 comments from the public, so thank you for that. I'll just sort of cut to the chase here. There's been a lot of comments. I am not in favor of a negative deck. I am not in favor of a conditional use permit in ag land. My position on that has not changed. I do not find that golf is compatible with agriculture. I was not in favor of golf being considered an agritourism use. I'm not in favor of a golf course being tied to the ag zoning. I will just put one, just read one thing out of what was, for lack of a better term, recommended. I'm not quite sure what was recommended and what wasn't. I think what was recommended is strictly what came out of the planning commission, but it says, "The only golf courses associated uses included in the definition of a golf course will be a golf pro shop, snack bar, and storage and maintenance facilities." That's for the conditional use permit. Clubhouses and restaurants are not included in the golf course definition. Clubhouses will be a separate conditional use permit in the A1 zone and may include a restaurant. So, you could be having basically two conditional use permits being processed simultaneously. And quite frankly, I think it's very hard to sustain a golf course economically without having even a housing element associated with it. So, my own feeling is, if I were to support something, what I would support would be putting a, making a golf course a permitted use in basically all zones, but make it subject to a specific plan, or if you would, a special plan. And a specific plan is something that is almost like a miniature community plan in which somebody would come in and you would provide your own zoning within the specific plan, and you would have commercial for overnight accommodation, whether it be a motel or cottages, a restaurant, a pro shop. You would have residential for the 15 or 25, or whatever the housing element would be. You'd have recreation on the golf course, or the putting greens, or the driving range. I'd feel much more comfortable, and I, because I like golf courses, you know. Quite frankly, if I were where you folks are, I'd be happy to be living next to a golf course. I think that would increase my property values, but I don't think it's good land use planning for the course that was proposed near you. So, you know, if the board were to do that, I would support, you know, putting that into the general plan, and if a golf course comes in and it's adjacent to a community plan, then it should end next to the community plan and get the appropriate zonings and not have a specific plan. But as I've said in the past, I'm very strong for infrastructure. I think, you know, it needs to have a sewer system. Hopefully, it can use recycled water on the golf course, which would be adding to the groundwater supply, not detracting. It should have, in my opinion, public appropriated water for, or potable water for drinking, et cetera, or even surface water for watering the golf course. If that's coming from one of our water rights, which we are about to lose most likely, because we're not using enough of them, then that's fine, and that also would help with the groundwater recharge. I put out such a comment when I was running for reelection two years ago in a candidate's forum in Murphys, and I said that, you know, in Murphys, because of all the wineries and we have two-floor shops and we have a lot of catering, et cetera, I said, "We should just basically be allowing weddings to take place anywhere in Murphys." That should just be part of the definition of who we are as far as the community of Murphys, and that had, I must say, a very mixed reception at the time. But if you look at Murphys, I mean, we have the Congregational Church downtown, and they have weddings. We have weddings in the park. We can have weddings at the tasting rooms. I mean, you know, that's the economic foundation of Murphys. The economic foundation for our county is basically tourism and recreation, you know, sort of however you define it. And I wouldn't mind having in the general plan sort of an overriding consideration that says that we would consider and be supportive of a golf course if they used a specific plan as the vehicle. And of course, that would require its own environmental, and you would look at the whole project at one time, and you wouldn't have to be worrying about, you know, is it consistent with one zoning when really you need at least three zoning? You need a recreation zone, you need a commercial zone, you need a housing zone. You may even need a multiple-family zone if you want some rental cottages, or a lodge, or something like that. And so, I think that's the way we should go, rather than tying it as a conditional use permit to ag. And I think golf courses are good for the economy, and having special events and weddings and the like is part of, a key component to our economic base, and you could put it in the economic element, and you could put sort of an old, for lack of a better term, an overriding consideration in the land use element, saying that we'll look at good proposals that come in, and you would need some criteria, but if it comes in as a specific plan, you can look at it as a unit, rather than this disjointed way that we're trying to come up with what's before us today. And if you look at La Contenta, that had all three of those units, the commercial, the residential, I don't know if it has any multiple-family, and the residential, and the commercial, and the, help me, what was the other one? Oh, I don't know, whatever. And so, the one in...
Saddle Creek.
Where do you live? The gated community? I can't remember the names of the gated communities. Forest Meadow has one like that. Meadowmont has one like that. Saddle Creek is, for lack of a better term, a conjunctive use that includes those four types of uses. And I think we should just come up with an overriding consideration, because I think it is a key element for the county, and I don't think we should discourage it, but like I say, it needs to have the proper infrastructure, including roads and sewer and water, and perhaps reclaimed water or appropriated surface water, and it needs to be economically viable, and we shouldn't be limiting that economic viability if we have a good project in front of us. So, I'm a yes to golf clubs and golf club developments, but I'm a no for what's in front of us today. I will not support the SEQA document of a negative deck, and I will not support putting a conditional use for golf courses on the ag zone. That's, those are my comments. Now, let me open it up to board comments, so if somebody wants to try to persuade another, Steve?
I don't want to try to persuade anybody. I just neglected to mention that. One thing which has not been brought up so far, which is that part of this, and sometimes it's easy to get overwhelmed with volume, but there was an intent that the planning department, and I believe county council advised us nearly two years ago, that we did not have definitions for things we referred to in our zoning code. So, regardless of the outcome of our vote on the two matters coming from the planning commission, I would ask that we separate out that recommendation that, and I'll read it here.
What page are you on?
I'm on page 2 of 14, I believe. "Staff recommends that even if the board declines to add golf courses or associated uses to the A1 zone, the proposed definition should still be adopted by the board as the uses are not currently defined." And I believe that staff did good work on this, that it was detailed, and it outlined the things that we were missing. You can't refer to something without defining it, and we would be remiss in not addressing that today.
Okay, well, maybe on that part, why don't we just give direction to staff?
Yes.
Obviously, they're not...
Yeah, we're not ready to go.
Just throw something out there and say, "This is the, this is the conditions." Let me just, I'll take the two motions, one on the SEQA and one on the conditional use permit, but I'd be interested if there's any other support other than my own for looking at golf courses as more as a specific plan in just about all zones, and come in with sort of complete projects as opposed to just a conditional use permit in ag zones, or any zone.
Would your timing be in relation to the zoning code?
Bring it back. Ask staff to take a look at that within the general plan context. Is there support on the board to ask staff to take a look at that?
Actually, from my understanding, Tom, that already exists. That is what Saddle Creek is. It's an entirety to itself.
It's much bigger, and I don't know whether it's allowed in all zones or not. I don't know what zone that came out of, but I don't mind that being included in the ag zone, also because we'll have a total look at it then as a total, as a total package, and I think that's what we need to do. I mean, if we don't do it that way and then sort of maximize the economic benefit of the project, as opposed to doing it this way where we're minimizing the economic benefit, we're just having a golf course, "Oh, and you can't have events. Oh, and you can't do this. Oh, and you can't do that." I mean, that's not the way to do it. The way to do it is to maximize, to have a good project and maximizing the economic benefits, and I think we're doing just the opposite.
So, what you're saying is NEMI should come back? So, what you're saying is NEMI should come back to us with a plan to build houses and all kinds of stuff around it and then approve it?
Well, I don't think it has the infrastructure, so, you know, I'm not saying just because you come in and request it, you get it. I mean, it still has to, it still has to get three votes to pass the board. It has to do a SEQA document, and in my opinion, for my vote, assuming I'm here, it would have to meet the infrastructure requirements.
Yeah.
You're suggesting that the conditions be included in that discussion and that zones be discussed as to where that would apply, and that you're looking to broaden it? You're not suggesting all zones.
Somebody wants to come in with a good project, and the board decides to approve it and it passes the SEQA, you know, and hopefully it would have community support that we now, that's sort of defined for people that want to build golf courses, kind of what we're looking for. And, I mean, part of the problem with the one down there is nobody knew until it was done what it was, because it was not represented as a, you know, so it never, it never did get conditioned appropriately. So, anyway, if there's support for that, maybe Janice can kind of see if she can work that over to where it could look like a viable product.
Chairman Tryon?
I would only suggest that we wait until you have a planning director, and that is really a planning issue. It's not really a legal issue, it's more of a planning issue.
Good move, Janice. That was, well done. We better have one before the general plan comes back.
And Jeanne voice agrees with that, too.
What was it, what did she say? What did George say?
He said, "I agree with that."
Oh, you, oh, George does, or you do?
No.
Oh, George does.
No, no, he's saying, "I do."
I'm sure county council... We'll do that as it may. Let's go back to what's before us, and we can have that further discussion when the general plan comes back.
I'm still ready for the persuasive part.
Okay, well, we have...
Well, Steve mentioned, excuse me.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
Steve was talking about what he was, he thought he was going to ask the board about some of the conditions that he was talking about. He brought up numerous times Sonoma and Napa counties. You know, why don't you read those again, because, you know, we're not Sonoma and we're not Napa County. So, but why don't you go ahead and read those again, the ones that you brought up?
Sure. I will, but I'll also mention, I'm not suggesting that we're Sonoma or Napa, but there are just a few places that managed to not have golf drive-out ag or be a conversion factor, and the way they did it was through conditions. And because that was called out by one commissioner at the planning commission hearing, I thought it would be worth researching and taking a look at how they did it. They are as follows. Is it okay, Mr. Chair?
Please, go ahead. We're at the board, so the board be satisfied before we take the vote.
One of it has to do with the size, as you've all talked about so far, that it's not on 20 acres, but something larger. A buffer, both Sonoma and Napa created buffers, but the golf courses had setbacks that were important and not encouraging conversion of neighboring ag land. Napa has an aspect that the golf course is secondary, it's a secondary use and is supporting the primary agricultural operation of the land. Sonoma and Napa both have, make sure that the golf course project is compatible with the neighboring agricultural uses, so there's mechanisms to accomplish that.
Wait, can you hold up right there? It's supporting, or what?
It's compatible.
It's compatible?
Yes, that it's not conflicted with the neighboring agricultural uses.
What does that mean?
Well, they outline it in rather much detail. I didn't bring the whole document, but I'd be happy to share it with you. Then, there's a seventh one that says, "Avoid major problems by not approving the golf courses with adjacent housing developments," which is very different than what we were just talking about. And there's a certain aspect of economic viability in rural counties that has come up in this discussion, so I'm not sure how well that would apply here. Sonoma has a requirement to use reclaimed water or public surface water, not groundwater. Sonoma also has locating golf courses near infrastructure and services within community centers or adjacent. Sonoma has a limit to just golf activities, not restaurants, lodges, and resorts, and many of the places have excluding prime ag, which is defined variously in different counties, but generally relates at least to soil type and productive nature of the land. So, those were the ones.
And so, your earlier comment was, if we could adapt those, or certain ones of those, that you would possibly be open to changing your mind? Was that your comment?
Well, my comment was that if there was a majority that disagreed with my position on the two things before us, that I would then ask that these go with it. Left to my own devices, I would suggest that we handle those in the way that Supervisor Tryon was talking about, which was to deal with it in the zoning as it comes up post-general plan.
So, your motion today would be, if you were to make the motion, what would be the planning commission's recommendations?
No, I would oppose the planning commission recommendation on the negative deck, and I would support its recommendation on the other matter.
So, you want to deny the negative deck? Do you want to deny the property?
But I would also take this into the direction Supervisor Tryon was, at least into the venue Supervisor Tryon was talking about.
So, where do you stand on the other issue that's also before us about deleting golf courses in the country club as either permitted, deleting golf courses and country clubs as either permitted or conditional use in all the other zones?
I wanted to take a look at those specifically and do some instruction to staff to bring back definitions and clarity in the existing zones.
Clarity as far as?
That what is and is not permitted and what the definitions of them would be. I know we have further, we haven't really had that discussion together, and I'm not sure we're up for that at the moment, but...
From what I'm reading here, and I don't have Title 17 that's corrupted me, but apparently it is permitted uses in these other zones. You own a commercial or industrial zone property, you can put in a golf course. You have, some of them are conditional uses depending on the zones, and I'm thinking that's probably the rural, commercial, or the professional office zones, but I don't think there's too much as far as commercial zoning or industrial zoning for commercial, I mean, for a conditional permit. And why bring that up? Because I'm looking at my community plans specifically, and a lot of them include those zones right now, and I think yours do, too. No?
No, I don't think we have a lot of...
That, you know, a guy could come in and say, "I own this property, it's been zoned this. This is what I'm going to put in." It may not be, you know, compatible to adjoining, because a lot of mine is surrounded by ag. I'm thinking of one particular piece of property that a gentleman has many uses he wants to do, but there's nothing, and right now it's zoned industrial.
I see.
There's nothing preventing him right now from saying, "I want to put in, hell with it, I'll put in a golf course."
Well, separate and distinct from this process and the two things that are before us today, I have no objection to trying to, trying to get a better definition, more clarity to all of that, and I do agree that some of the stuff that we have in our existing code makes no sense whatsoever.
We're going to be dealing with all the zoning changes after the general plan is
We're going to be dealing with all the zoning changes after the general plan is approved. And so I think those things that were brought up and the staff report and that Gary addressed, we can address at that time. Otherwise then we might as well bring back industrial zone and deal with industrial zone and then we'll have another two inches of paper and then we'll, that's due commercial and then we'll have.
She only had two inches?
Another two inches or whatever of paper. And, and it's, I really appreciate the quality of what was done. It's just that we are going to look at all of the zones and make sure it's compatible with the general plan. So instead of piecemealing it, I'd like to look at those things that staff recommended and that Gary alluded to when we review all the zones, not piecemeal.
What a novel idea.
Well, I just, I just.
Okay, we're up here, you guys.
I bring it up because that's what staff recommendation is in our documents.
I understand.
And they also put, provided some definitions. I mean, we can choose to, to not deal with that today and just deal with the issue of the negative deck and the denial of this addition to A1 zoning. But I just thought I'd throw it out there because that's what the recommendations are.
Right. And, and I was speaking to those things. I do agree that there are some things that are, that you can take out of here if we can separate it. Question is whether we do that in today's transactions or whether it comes back for some review, short of the full review, which should happen during.
Well, then I think it's safe to say that if we want to take full, that's off the table today as far as, as far as deleting in the existing zones.
Yes.
Yes, I think so. We'll just deal with the negative deck and the A1.
And the conditional use permit for A1.
So that, that staff recommendation's off the table. So we can hone it down now to a motion for, for the negative deck.
And the conditional use.
Well, you want to do it together or?
No, no.
Yeah, so we can, yeah, so you want to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, are there further board discussion?
Absolutely.
Okay. I told you this would take a hundred and public comments.
You know, there, there was quite a number of people that came before the microphone today and gave impassioned speeches about a hope for due legal process, integrity. Mr. Walensky quoted, his quote was, he hoped that we would seek real constitutional justice. And I really sincerely hope that all the comments that were made here were, in the guise of finding truth and justice, were made by people who truly sought those things and not only if those things were in their favor. Because sometimes truth and justice alone are not always in our favor. Number one, during the campaign process, a constituent, well, now a constituent, prospective constituent, came to me and relayed to me a story about how her property that is located on Highway 26, she put up a six-foot cyclone fence. And six-foot fence is a standard fence. The county came along and tagged her and said that she hadn't pulled a permit for that fence and she didn't have the right to build that fence. And she asked them why and they said, because it was six footer over. And she said, well, I read the policy to say up to, it says anything up to six feet, you know, you can do it without a permit. And they said, well, we see it as, since it's six foot, it's six foot and over. So that little hairline, okay, that was her number one beef. Number two, her husband got a trencher and did some trenching to put in some PVC pipe to put in landscape lighting. It wasn't going to be carrying water or sprinklers, nothing like that. It was just some landscape lighting. He wanted to do it right the first time, you know? So he trenched it, put it in some PVC. Somebody from the county came along and saw that he was trenching, nailed him again, gave him and said he had to get a permit. So after the process was over, they spent somewhere between $700 to $1,000 in permits to put up their six-foot fence, which is standard residential height. They paid for the permit for trenching. And then when they submitted the finals to the county, the county turned around and reassessed their property value as increased for those things that they had done to upgrade their property. So knowing that story and knowing that this person is an honest person and not a liar, how can I possibly sit here and believe that Mike Neme was able to take cat tractors and earth moving equipment on Ospital Road and to create a golf course in the county never stopped him? Has the county ever to this day went out and put a chain over the fence and parked a sheriff's cruiser and told anybody that they couldn't come and golf there on a weekend? Hasn't happened. It has not happened. I've got a document right here from the assessor's office, signed by Grant Metzger, who was the assessor of Calaveras County in 2005, addressed to Michelle and Michael Neme. Dear Mr. and Mrs. Neme, blah, 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 as reported, property statement, $223,000 was added for additions to the irrigation system. An additional estimate of $451,000 was added for golf course development. So whatever their assessed value of the properties that belonged to the Nemes prior to October 25th, 2005, on October 2005, they encumbered them further with an additional $223,000 for irrigation and $451,000 for the fact that it was no longer ag land. It was now a golf course. If the county recognized it as such, they taxed them. I have the document right here, the bill, that says they were assessed as such. Are you going to tell me that the county never taxed them as such? Are you going to tell me that the county never knew that he created an 18-hole golf course? But somebody that lives not even a mile or two miles from Neme's house along 26 got hit twice for trenching some, some lighting and putting up a fence? If we're, if the truth is what we're after here today and we are truly seeking justice and integrity before the law and the citizens of this country, I have no doubt that Nemes did that in violation of Williamson Act and the environmental laws and whatever. But you know what? Whoever was aware of it, and I know darn well, I didn't fall off the turn up truck yesterday. Somebody was aware of it in this county in 2005, somebody. I would take a venture to guess that probably is Mr. Supervisor Claudino who didn't run for a second term and Mr. Thomas who was removed from office, Mrs. Marino who left on unfavorable circumstances. I would suggest to you that the people that were part of the process are no longer here and we're left to clean up with the mess. So let's stop pretending that the county never knew that Mr. Neme was building a golf course because they knew darn well and we all know it. And that's what makes some people mad. It makes people mad that he may very well be able to have a golf course when he started it and started work on it and did it illegally. And you know what? I'm right there with you. I'm mad. I'm not happy that he was able to do that. It doesn't take away the fact, though, that if we do not change this conditional use permit and we do not reconcile with this man, the county could lose tens of millions of dollars. And if we're going to lose millions of dollars in a lawsuit, I would rather lose it to keep it rural for the county not abiding by environmental standards than I would want to lose it to the Nemes because we accepted their use at one time and then backpedaled on it illegally and we're going to get eaten in court. If there's anybody in this room that doesn't understand the legal liability that this county faces based on their erroneous actions in the past, you are asleep at the wheel. And what I'm asking for today is for people to come to grips with reality. There were mistakes made. If you got a fix-it ticket leaving here today because you had a taillight out, you would get that taillight fixed and you would take it to the DMV and they would fine you. And then you would be able to continue to operate your vehicle. Mr. Neme constructed a golf course illegally, I believe, and everybody has a right to be mad about that. But the county was right there with them. So if we're allowed, if we allow him a conditional use permit to have a golf course and keep it rural or whoever wants to sue the county and they win, then God bless them for following their convictions. So the right thing to do here today would be unless the county, the board of supervisors that sit on this board and anybody else involved in this is willing to allow all the other laundry list of activities that occur on agricultural land in this county, which are violating some of the very same laws that people are citing against this project at Trinitas, unless they're willing to shut them all down, that is not just, nor is it moral, nor is it ethical. I have no financial gain, win or lose, for the Trinitas project. I don't golf. I'm not a golfer. This is purely about the law and taking responsibility for one's actions. If we have to lose a lawsuit to keep it rural because we had bad actions in the past, so be it. Let's have the lawsuit. If they win, we'll pay it and we'll wipe the slate clean and start over anew. And I hope that this is, staff has spent 17 months preparing this document and we're going to come to this board and these people here assembled today and nitpick it about, you know, driving ranges or not driving ranges or whatever. If we pass the conditional use permit, Nemes, if they want to do their project, they're still going to have to go through that process. And you can align anything you want as a conditional use. You can say they have to have tertiary water or whatever instead of groundwater. You can limit the size of the clubhouse. You can limit the scope of the, whatever. But as it sits right now, if we go down the road, what I hear from this board is that we have no integrity because we allow other operations to continue to exist and we are not putting them under the same constraints. I would ask that this board, if they have integrity, to approve the motions that have been asked of us by county council and at such time that the Nemes or anybody else brings a project forward, then you can use all the scrutiny in the world to make sure that it's done correctly. Thank you.
Any other board comments?
I believe that there's somebody in the audience that might have.
Wait, we closed off public comments. I think we just leave it up here. I don't know that there's any more to be added. It's fine.
Okay, I was the planner who wrote the initial.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. We've closed public, that's fine. We've closed public comments to the board. The board is fully informed on the issues with, with this conditional use permit and this EIR and the public's comments.
All right. Then I'd like to make just one quick comment.
Go ahead.
Because I think it's important to note that there were public employees with a great deal of integrity that did note some of the activities that were going on and did their best to exercise from what little authority they had, the idea of coming into compliance with our own rules, codes and processes. And while they were unsuccessful, they should not be overlooked as part of the history.
Absolutely.
Okay, we're up here, gentlemen, ladies. Okay, what we have then before us, let me just do it. Here we go. The planning commission recommends that the board of supervisors pass a motion authorizing the chair to sign a resolution to adopt the post-mitigated negative declaration. So I will entertain a motion whether to adopt the mitigated negative declaration or to reject the mitigated negative declaration.
I make a motion to accept it.
Okay, I have a motion by Supervisor Spellman to accept the negative declaration. Do I have a second? I'll second. Okay, I have a second by Supervisor Tofanelli. Do I have? Further board discussion? All in favor? Well, I'll just, I'll just poll the board. Supervisor Spellman?
Yes.
Supervisor Tofanelli?
Yes.
Supervisor Callaway?
No.
Supervisor Walensky?
No.
Supervisor Tryon is a no. So that fails on a 3-2 vote. All right, all right.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, since you denied the negative declaration, there is no further motion that you can make on the next action.
You don't wish to have a further motion?
No, you're done.
Yeah, that's it?
We're done. We, we canceled the closed session. I would just like to give one other comment before the board leaves since it came up in the, in the discussion. Well, because I think, I think staff needs some direction on this. And this is this mitigation, that if you do something on ag land or open space or something, that you need to mitigate whatever the acreage is that's taken out and put it in a perpetual easement someplace else and you mitigate it on an acre for acre or a two, two for one or whatever the ratio is. I would just like to say for myself, I am adamantly opposed to that. I think we will get just horrible results. That will drive the cost of development up appreciably. What it's going to do is drive development further away from the community centers where you can get cheaper land to do your development and to do the offset. Because if you have to do that offset, it's like paying double the price for the land. And that is just a killer for development as far as costs are concerned that I can see. So I am adamantly opposed to that type of mitigation that, in my opinion, will drive development away from the community centers. So I don't know where the rest of the board is.
We'll all have our opportunity to voice our opinions when it comes to the board.
Okay, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.